Okay. Can we review these already?
Yes.
All right. Should we do these now, or do you think I should just put it off until we get a lull? All right.
Have they gone through the game end of everybody else who gets to look at them?
Yes, they have.
All right, so we'll sign these real quick and then get to our next order of business. What's today, the 13th?
Oh, I'll take care of the date, Nathan. Don't worry about the time to do that.
All right.
Is the applicant sitting here waiting for those plans?
I believe so.
We can sign them after, Kim.
You can.
You know what, let's do committee reports real quick while we're doing this, so we're not completely stalled out. Joanna's MRPC, Capital Planning's Joanna. Let's go to Open Space, no report, School Committee. School Committee is not helping, really, is it? School Committee is doing fine. They're going to have a ceremony involving a beam that's been signed by the students, and they're in the process of, I think that's been scheduled. I'll give you the date for that in a moment. I have to check my phone. How about Building Reuse Committee updates?
All right, we met last week. Talked about a number of things, including the property line over by the Passios Building. Last time I said we were going to meet with the School Committee, but that was incorrect. We're going to meet with the School Committee at our next meeting at the end of the month. We're going to have a special meeting with those guys. But we, similar to the drawings I did for us to talk about the Village District, just some graphics, I did the same thing for the Reuse Committee as well, looking at the potential for use at the Passios property and also the center of town here, the Ritter property and the old primary school property. So the committee reviewed those and agreed to use those as a base of conversation moving forward with the School Committee and whoever else is interested. And I think the idea is to have a first meeting just with the Reuse Committee and the School Committee to talk about the property line, and then maybe widen the scope and involve the planning board if we want to be, and the Board of Selectmen and whoever else. What else did we talk about? As far as items we submitted to Capital Planning, one of them was to paint at least the front facade of the Town Hall. That didn't make the cut. But one of the other items we did put in was to hire an architect to do a review of kind of the same properties that the Reuse Committee has been looking at and just do an official review, make recommendations on the best use of those buildings and what it would take to bring those buildings up to code to perform an office use, so we can kind of understand what it would take to move town offices in any one of the buildings or the potential reuse of someone coming in to use those buildings. And I think the draft, RFP or RFQ, asked them to provide cost analysis for those options as well. So those are the two high notes of the Reuse Committee.
Any questions for Damon? Thanks for the update, that's great. Ken, would you like to provide an update on MJTC?
Yeah, next meeting is this coming Wednesday, so nothing new since the last update.
And thanks, Matt, anything on AdCom?
Yes, their meeting is also this week. It's coming up on Thursday, April 16th, 7:00 PM in the Ritter, where they will be discussing, they're meeting with the Farmers Market Manager from Shirley. They're going to discuss the market opening schedule for the Farmers Market here in Lunenburg. They're going to post, they're going to discuss posting of the Farmers Market regulations in application form, and they are going to discuss market vendor recruitment and advertising budget.
Any questions for Matt? All right, thanks very much, Matt. So, all right, let's turn to our first, our next order of business, which is going to be presented to us about the 790, 792 Mass Ave, the estate of Edward Riley Jr.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Anyone who would like a small-sized copy of this? Well, to record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Frank Preston of Whitman and Bingham Associates, and I prepared this plan, and I hope I can answer any questions that you might have. For those of you who are familiar with the site, I'm sure you all are, this is the remaining piece of land that was left after the property was sold off in large part to create the Stone Farm condominiums. This is the remaining piece of land that goes with the old Stone Farm Package Store. And our objective tonight is to submit and hopefully get approved an A&R plan dividing it into two lots. Now, I should interject that plans for this property are very much fluid. Buyers are actively being sought, and as a result, a different plan may eventually appear in front of you based on what they might want. But for now, we're hoping that this is our best chance now of making the plan, the plan, property marketable. And as such, we've created two lots that meet the minimum area and frontage requirements. One lot contains in its entirety the existing building. Don't even know if that building's going to stay or not. Thank you very much. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the Board?
I have a question. Why did you decide to separate Lot 2 with both zoning districts?
Well, we had to avoid the building with the adequate side yard.
I get you, okay. Sure.
The, we've delineated the zoning district, so we went to Mr. Sauvageau for advice in this matter to make sure we got it right. And this basically reflects his guidance in that matter.
So does the Lot 2 contain all the pertinent fixtures and structures?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Septic system, excellent.
Any, just, and again, to interject again, any development on the site will require connection to the town sewer.
Okay, because it runs along Mass Ave?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? Adam, do you have any thoughts, questions, comments?
No. It's a fairly straightforward land division.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Preston.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I think the process hasn't changed. You'll be submitting this to the various town boards for a comment. That's how it still works. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. The next order of business is our discussion with the Historical Commission about the Village Center District bylaw and the Architectural Preservation District bylaw. All right, so we think, I see some members from the Historical Commission. If you guys are up for it, why don't you come, feel free to come join us in the front here. Colin, do you want to join us as, oh, okay, thanks. So, do we?
I don't think it's a joint meeting. I think this is just a general discussion. I don't think they're deliberating anything. This would be the planning board's. I mean, if they, I don't think you posted a meeting, did you? Yeah, so they're here at your invitation because there was a discussion about the Board formally deciding how they were going to approach the.
Linking.
Yeah, the Architectural Preservation District and the Village Center District strategically at town meeting. The Historic Commission was part of that original discussion, so we invited them to be part of this discussion with the Board as, you know, partners and as, you know, people who have an interest in both and an interest in how it gets approached. But the planning board is the only body deliberating.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. All right, so is Adam just mentioned, one of the items we want to talk about is, you know, the relationship of these two bylaws as we go to town meeting. Another topic which we may want to talk while we're all together is there was some minor amendments that were discussed with the Board of Selectmen. Is this a good opportunity to discuss if we want to be prepared for anything in that manner going into the meeting, or?
Well, you know, council has some recommended language changes that are relatively minor. And I think they were reflected in the discussion with the Board of Selectmen. I think it's probably better to prepare those and discuss them at the 27th.
At the 27th? Okay.
Because again, I don't think that they substantially change the bylaw. Not having the list here, I don't think it's really. I think it would be a confusing discussion.
Agreed. Okay, so I guess to open this discussion, so I guess, I think at least most of the Historical Committee present, and I think most, if not all, the Board present here were present at the meeting with the Board of Selectmen. At the Board of Selectmen, we've, you know, we found out that the Building Reuse Committee has voted six to one. They've, the Building Reuse Committee has expressed formal support for both bylaws. The Building Reuse Committee has also formally said they would prefer that both of the bylaws get heard, the ability to be heard independently, if that's an issue. The Board of Selectmen also voted to support both bylaws. Some members of the Board of Selectmen felt that they should, you know, I think everybody on the Board of Selectmen supports APD, everybody supports VCD. Some on the Board of Selectmen feel very strongly that the APD really should pass if we're going to have a VCD. Others, like the Building Reuse Committee, feel that, you know, the VCD is so important to the town that in the unlike, in the event that should the APD not pass, they would still like the opportunity for the VCD to be heard. And so I think, though, the good news is the environment in which we're having this conversation is, you know, between three boards, you have near consensus on support for both the bylaws, which is really great. And I think people appreciate the work that's been done and really feel, aren't just supporting it, but feel good about supporting both the bylaws. I think just to frame what we're discussing here, so really, I think that's the big message as we go into this discussion that we want to understand. And so really, what we're talking about here is, in terms of the linking, is in the eventuality that despite the, despite the overwhelming support amongst the Boards for the APD, in the unlikely eventuality that for some reason it shouldn't pass, would the VCD still go forward? And so that's what we're here to discuss. So with that, I want to open up, open it up for discussion to both Boards and just raise your hand and we'll start discussing.
Well, if I can start, I just want to be clear of, from what I took out of the Selectmen's meeting was they are two different articles and you can't really link them. I think what we're talking about is recommending passing over the VCD?
That would be correct. The planning board, the discussion was if the APD doesn't pass, the planning board making the motion amongst itself that the VCD be passed over. So that's, it's not a linkage of articles. It's a conceptual or strategic linkage of the way that the Board is approaching passage of the articles.
So if we move to pass over the VCD at town meeting, how does that work? Do we just make the recommendation and the whole body of the town has to agree with us?
Correct. You know, it would be the same as any other motion. Motion would go, there'd be a vote.
Okay. So we're just talking about our recommendation at this point?
Correct, yes. I mean, as with everything, it's your action that town meeting has to then vote on.
So in terms of where we land on this tonight, I think there's a few ways we could go on it. I think we could say, yes, we're going to, we agreed tonight that we're going to make a motion to pass over VCD if AP doesn't pass. We could say, oh, no, we're not going to make a motion to go over VCD if AP doesn't pass. Or we could say, you know what, we're just going to leave that to be like a game day call.
That's not a good idea.
What's that?
I don't think that's a good idea. I think we should, we should preposition what we're going to do as a result of this discussion, you know, and agree on what the action would be in town meeting, because we don't want to be having a discussion about it in town meeting.
I think that that's a very salient point.
Rebecca. Rebecca Lantry, 251 West Street, from the Lunenburg Historical Commission. The first I heard of these two being linked was from the planning board. And so I have two questions for you. Why did you want them linked, and now why do you want them unlinked?
So, so we want, we want them to be linked because the Village Center District opens up a lot of opportunities for changing the character of the town, particularly the older buildings. So if someone wanted to change an old building or even demolish it in order to put a new business in place, that was a concern that we had as a consequence of the Village Center District that we didn't want to support. And we were originally talking about putting language into the Village Center District to prevent that. And as we continued down that path, it became more evident that the appropriate place to put that would be in an Architectural Preservation District, because that would be the right vehicle for performing that type of operation. So we took it all out of the VCD. So there's nothing, there's no language in the VCD about you can't demolish your 100-year-old home in order to put a new retail business in place. And so because of that, we wanted to make sure that the Architectural Preservation District passed so that those restrictions would be in place prior to the VCD passing, so that when the VCD goes forward, we have those protections of the historic buildings in the center of town. Now, all of that said, there are, there are people that feel that the two should be able to stand on their own and that the Village Center is very important. I still support the linkage between the two. I wouldn't want to see the VCD pass without an Architecture Preservation District. But, you know, I do understand a lot of work has gone into the VCD. It is a significant benefit for the town for it to pass. It helps out the center of town, it helps out the whole town. But we don't want the negative impact of losing some of our historic properties, which would be a potential outcome if we didn't have the Architectural Preservation District as well. So that's how it, that's how the linkage was created and the discussion about whether or not we formally support the linkage and what we do at town meeting is what we're here to discuss.
And to answer your question, we're not flip-flopping on the subject. We brought it up, never made a formal decision on that. We slated this discussion for tonight.
To further both of those comments, the Village Center District bylaw has been in works for about a month, a year and a half. And it was only about six months ago that the Historical Commission came in and wanted to promulgate the APD. We took a good number of things out of the Village Center District bylaw to put into the APD. And with full hopes, very shortly after the combination came in, that we would, we would support both together and neither separately. That was my understanding from the initial input from the Historic Commission. And because of that, I do not feel that the Village Center District bylaw has adequate protection for the things that were removed to go into the APD. And also, just to bolster the previous comment, is that we are not here saying that we want to separate them. This is, this is the discussion that we've had a number of times at a number of meetings, and my recollection was that we unanimously voted to link them. If one didn't pass, then the other one, we would withdraw. But I don't, I guess that seems to have fallen through the cracks.
I don't think we actually voted.
I don't think we actually voted.
That was a common consensus, at least.
We had a consensus. But there was concern raised, particularly by the Building Reuse folks, that they really need the Village District to pass in order to be able to use.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the three of you clearly support linking them in some.
Correct.
Definitely. I think I've been the only one who's been kind of throwing a wrench in that. But, and I don't, don't get me wrong, I fully support both of them. I want both of them to pass. I just want to make sure, if we're going to say that, we're going to pass over it and opt not to get any feedback on the Village District bylaw should the APD not pass. What's, what's our plan for a day after town meeting when we have neither bylaw?
We don't have them today.
September.
But what are we going to make, what kind of change are we going to make to make them more appealing to the town, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. I think, that's, I think, I mean, we, that's a, that's a very good question. I don't know, do we want to talk about that now? Do we want to, any other, we've heard from the, most of the planning board. And thank you, Rebecca. Does anyone else from the Historical Committee want to speak on this subject?
Colin Dwyer, 76 Main Street, Historical Commission. Yeah, I think really, we have concerns about not linking them, that there would be inadequate protection, like Mr. Allison said. Yeah, we're concerned about that. At the same time, we're, we're happy that they're, that we're going to get our turn at bat, in any case. You know, we're going to get to try this, and if it doesn't pass, we'll get to try again next year and see, you know, what, you know, maybe we can make changes to make it more appealing. And I can definitely understand how the planning board would feel the same way about their bylaw, that they at least want to, they put a lot of work into it and they want their chance to put this before the town. I'm just, I am concerned, first of all, that there is a possibility, even if the town wants, they could vote no in terms, like, you can make a motion to pass over the next, and the town could vote no. We want to vote on the Village District, and it could still pass. You know, and they could vote on it, because then it would come forward, right? Because they are separate. So if that's what people want, that's what's going to happen. And so I think we have to consider that that's a possibility, too. We really don't know what's going to happen at town meeting. And so I think we need to be prepared for whatever happens, however the people vote.
Good points.
I have a comment on that, too. We can withdraw, right? We can withdraw the article?
Yeah, as the.
And we don't have, it doesn't have to go to a town vote whether or not we withdraw it?
I would have to look. I think you might have to withdraw prior to the opening of the meeting.
Okay.
But. But I may be incorrect on that.
Amory Phelps, Leominster Road, Historic Commission. So if we do keep them separate and the APD passes and the zoning doesn't, does ours stand solid?
Yes.
Well, it does. It should. There is the issue of.
Well, so it's going to get voted on by the public.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm talking about, at the town meeting.
No, again, at the election, correct? It's not just passed because it's.
No, it's passed at town meeting.
Yeah, it's at town meeting.
It goes to the, it gets passed at town meeting, then it goes to the AG. And after the AG's review, as long as it passes, the AG's review, it stands.
The only potential, the only factor that we may need to prepare for in that event, and hopefully, again, I want to emphasize in all this, there's overwhelming support on the Boards for both. So we're really doing some contingency planning here. But if the APD were to pass and the VCD were not to pass, there is language in the APD, for example, defining its boundaries, which refers to the VCD. So maybe that's where the section that says.
Yeah, that, there's actually a note from Town Council that looks to consolidate that into a single map. And Damon and I spoke about that beforehand, and we'll probably be able to provide something.
Yeah. Okay, so you should be all set, then. That was my only comment on that. So your point is good. Yeah, if the APD passes, I mean, I don't, I haven't heard any concerns about deleterious effects of the APD passing by itself that anyone has talked about. I mean.
I mean, I've talked to the community, and from everything that I've heard from individuals that I've spoken to, it's all been positive responsive about the APD. Not inquiring too much about the zoning, because that's a diff, that's not my, but it's a very positive APD. So I just want to make sure that if we pass and you don't, that we can still, everything is, that we're solid.
Yep, you're solid.
Okay.
No, good, thanks for bringing that up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Al DeWolma. I represent the Stone Farm property that the gentleman just put that plan in there. And my question with this, with all these terms and everything, I was just wondering, is that property falling into this circle that you have in town, or no?
No, it's outside of the.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
Yeah, and if you're referring to the circle on a map, you might have seen, the circle is a little bit confusing, because the circle is representing, I think, like a half-mile radius. But in fact, the proposed boundaries are the less noticeable line inside of the circle. So it's a really good question. At this, yeah.
At this point, that's all I really wanted to know right now. Thanks.
Thank you. So.
So, okay.
So your question there, Damon, about what is the day after, if, in the event of a VCD, is a APD catastrophe, or?
Yeah. Are we going to rewrite the APD and keep taking swings at it until it passes before we can hear a Village District? Are we going to put historic items in the Village District?
I'd say we have both options, actually, at our disposal. So we could make that call afterwards, understand why it didn't pass, because like I said, it has overwhelming support. I haven't talked to anybody that has referred to it negatively. So if it doesn't pass, it would be interesting to understand why it didn't pass. And then if we can restructure it such that whatever, whatever reasons were causing it to not pass could be taken out of it or fixed, we could do that. Otherwise, we do have the option of revising the Village Center District. We'll put the protections into that if we want to. And then go forward again for the fall town meeting if one happens.
Yeah, I mean, I think those are all great points. And I guess to your point, if the reasons were, if the reasons the VCD didn't pass were, for example, hypothetically, that they didn't like the changes in a lot, many parts of the Village Center, that maybe you could deal with a lot of the things the Building Reuse Committee is looking for in an overlay district or something like that. Maybe the solution is further narrow the boundaries. I mean, I, I think they're both going to pass, so I think this is all very speculative. But depending on the reason for objection, you can come up with different counter responses to address the objection and be able to move forward at least and achieve some of the main objectives in terms of drafting the changes.
Sure.
Yeah, so, all right, so we've heard from everyone. I haven't given my opinion on this yet, well, today. Yeah, I think everybody's pretty well-expressed in some form. My thoughts as well. There's, you know, overall, I think the APD is really important to the VCD. I guess part of the reason, the case in favor of the game day call is probably, there's a great chance we won't need to make the call. And I guess I'm really thankful and pleased with the support that both of the bylaws that have garnered from, I think some people, you know, some people like myself and like others on the Board would like, would really are concerned about the VCD passing without the APD. I can understand where some people's priorities, some people who also want the APD to pass are concerned about what, you know, about important issues that are important to them in terms of the management of some of the town's properties and whatnot if they don't have the APD. So, so it's kind of, I think the great thing is that everybody is really on the substance of the matter, 99% on the same page. And there really is just, you know, what is more important to you when push comes to shove? There's a great chance that push won't come to shove. So part of me, that's, that's my, that's the argument I would say is in favor of the game day call. Yes, it's going to be an awkward five minutes, but I would say we could postpone that until, in the event. in the event that the APD fails, confer on town floor, bearing in mind the conversation we've had today, and make the decision then. But that's just my opinion. You know, it's up to the, up to the board. The boards.
So, so what do we do here? Do we make a, a motion to vote on what we're going to do, or?
If, if that's what, if you're going to make a decision tonight, you could make a motion and formalize it.
Well, then I'd like to move that we do create the linkage between the two, that if in the unlikely event that the Architectural Preservation District does not pass at town meeting, that we request however, however the, the means is appropriate, whether we withdraw, or we request to withdraw, or whatnot, the VCD, such that the VCD cannot be voted in as a bylaw if the Architectural Preservation District.
Is not. I would second that.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Agree to disagree.
Okay, any, any thoughts from the Historical Committee?
I mean, you've got a motion.
Oh, we got a, okay, so no more public.
The discussion's amongst.
Oh, amongst the board only?
Generally.
Okay.
Because you're the voting members on that discussion motion.
Okay, can we solicit input?
If you'd like. I mean, it's not like it's a.
Can we solicit a straw poll?
You might be a little, I'll add on that.
All right, Rebecca.
We can't officially vote for you, because we haven't posted this as a meeting. But it just goes back to the historical context, which is what we're all about, is that there wouldn't have been an APD if there was not a Village District bylaw. It was our sitting in on those meetings for two years with you people to make sure that this did protect the historic nature of our town, that then, when those protections were going to be not there, that the APD was born. And so I think that they are strongly linked together. It's like, this is residential property that belongs to people. It is historic residential property. We need to protect those people and their homesteads and their values. And that's what these two together do.
I believe they're both going to pass. But I want to thank you and you for supporting us the way you have, and all of you. I think it's very important to demonstrate how we value the town and how we represent the town, and I want to thank you for your support.
Thank you.
All right, well, we, we have a motion. All right, so I'm going to, we'll, we'll take a vote from left, from Matt on down here. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nope.
Aye. All right, well, thanks, thanks, everyone, for, for meeting on that. Yeah, and just, I think that this, you know, this vote is, it's not an easy vote, but hopefully it'll become an easy vote, because the APD's going to pass and it's not going to matter. And, you know, this is hopefully not a divisive thing. We, I think, we totally respect, you know, your opinion on this.
They both pass.
Likewise, likewise. All right, well, thanks, everybody, for all the great work on these, and, and let's look forward to a successful town meeting where they both pass in this. So I think with that, we're going to close the, on the VCD and the APD, unless there's anything else anyone else from either board would like to talk about in relation to VCD and APD. All right, well, thanks so much for taking the time tonight and previously, and. These are for what?
Those are yours.
Okay. All right, so the next item we have on our agenda is a public hearing for a board warrant article. Matt, would you like to, to open, or Damon, would you like to open us up here with the, the public hearing announcement?
Sure. Lunenburg Planning Board would, will hold a public hearing on April 13, 2015, 6:35 PM, in the Joseph Alata Meeting Room, Town Hall 17, Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. 1462. To bend the zoning map, map 59, parcel 8, 790 to 792, Mass Ave. Owner Edward H. Riley, Jr., 39 Pinnacle Road, Ellington, Connecticut. And map 59, parcel 9, 748 Massachusetts Avenue, owner Stone Farmer State Condominium for, or 748 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass. From commercial to limited business residential, copies are on file to planning office. Notice of said hearing will be duly posted in the usual posting places.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, I'm sorry, one moment. All right, so the next, so, yeah, okay, that's good, thank you. Okay, so here's the map here. I have a question before we, we get into this. So I'm, I'm familiar with some of the background in this. How exactly, which board actually, is it, is, this is on the warrant already, and who actually placed it on the warrant?
The planning board.
The planning board placed on the warrant, okay, gotcha. Okay, sounds good. All right, so, all right. Sorry, I'm, I haven't done this procedure a whole lot, so it's going to take me a minute just to get up to speed here. All right, so I guess what we'll begin with is describing exactly what this is. So basically, the, the article is going to see if the town will vote to approve a zoning change for a particular parcel, which is, do you have the address?
It's actually 790, 792, and 748. It's two parcels. There is a small commercial district located within a ribbon of local business, or, local business, limited business residential along Massachusetts Avenue. And the whole area has a general condition where it's limited business residential with this one area that, at the creation of zoning, was spot zoned to create a zone that met the business that was located there at the time. Generally, when you zone something, you zone in a manner that is what the town would like to see. You're, and this is not a, a unique situation. At Lunenburg, a lot of towns, when they created zoning in the 50s, 60s, 70s, went around and said, okay, what's where? We'll just call this zone what that business is. And it, it creates sort of a hodgepodge. And by going and smoothing those out and folding them into the surrounding zoning, you're sort of meeting more of the general intent and desire of what the original zoning would have met.
Gotcha.
So I think that it's, it's clear that this limited business residential extends in both directions and is more in tune with what the area is currently, and was probably originally intended to be, with the exception of a business that existed. And so they chose to create a, a specific spot zone for that business at the time.
Gotcha, thanks for explaining. So does anyone on the board, I, I don't like to, because this is something the board hasn't had a chance to discuss a lot, I am going to open it up for, for public feedback and proponents and opponents. I'd like to, to give the board an opportunity to discuss this, ask questions to Adam, or introduce their thoughts on this particular warrant resolution. Warrant article, sorry.
I would like first to hear from the owner. We've heard a number of things about the owner of the property, in pro or con, about this rezoning, and, and the owner is in the audience.
Okay.
I've been dying to hear from the horse's mouth.
Before we turn to the owner and the public, any, any, any other thoughts on the board?
Well, I just wanted to, this, this was originally zoned commercial around the, the location, because it was originally a business.
Correct.
The reason it's coming up for this article opportunity is because it has been not a commercial business for a number of years, if I.
That is correct.
How, how many years has it not been an, an active business?
I, I only have anecdotal knowledge, but it's been almost. It's been almost a decade?
No, it's been since 2000.
So about, about 10 years. Yeah, so, so, so I just wanted to say that that is the reason that it, it's coming up. Adam, you could probably tell us what the actual timeline is, but if, if a commercial business is in an area that is eligible to be rezoned to match the surrounding zoning, if it's not used for that purpose for a period of time, then it is eligible to, to be changed back.
Well, property is always eligible to be rezoned. You generally can't rezone a singular property if, if, let's say we were going the other way, and the area were limited business residential, and you said, okay, I want to take this one property, maybe it isn't even this one, maybe it's a different one, and I want to turn that into commercial. You can't do that, because it's considered spot zoning, and it generally only benefits the owner. Outside of some extreme circumstances, if you have a large parcel that could create public good. But if you're moving from a zone to something that's adjacent, you're extending a zone or folding a zone back in, that creates what they consider to be public good and doesn't necessarily count as spot zoning. Now, if the business were operating and were a business that fit into a commercial zone, you could still theoretically rezone it into limited business residential. That use would stay as a pre-existing non-conforming use, could operate in perpetuity as long as it, as it was continually operational and wasn't considered abandoned for a period of two years or more. And at that point, it would lose its grandfather status. So property is always eligible to be rezoned. There's no prohibition on the rezoning of property. It's the manner in which you rezone, how much property you rezone, and what exists on that property has rights after the rezoning. So you can't say, you know, we have a lot of trouble with this one business, so we're going to rezone their property so they can't operate that business there anymore. Well, they can still operate the business until such time as it, the use becomes abandoned.
For two years.
Correct.
Okay.
So if a business closes and the same kind of business comes and purchases that property six months later, they can continue to operate that, because that property can, hasn't, that use hasn't been abandoned on the property for a period of two years or more.
Okay.
Generally, they'll need a special permit from the zoning board as a continuation of a pre-existing non-conforming, but that bar is generally fairly low.
Gotcha. So this would move it back to limited business and no longer commercial.
That's correct.
Which means it would no longer qualify.
Correct.
For opening up another commercial business there.
Damon, any, any thoughts before we open up for the public?
Nope.
All right, so I, I guess I'd.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I have, I have another question. The limited business zoning, they have allowed uses and, and special permit uses. So if it's not specifically stated within the allowed or the special permit uses, is it, is it denied, is it not allowed?
It's a prohibited use. That's, that's, that's the way that the bylaws are written. If it's not expressly allowed through some manner, whether it's special permit or permitted, it's a, it's a prohibited use.
So if somebody had a parcel within the limited business, they could not go, they couldn't go to the ZBA to have it an allowable use?
I don't believe that we allow use variances.
A permitted use, I guess. Okay.
No.
Good, thank you.
All right, Rod?
What I will say to expand on that is, at the end of 4438, under limited business, says, "Any other use similar to the uses here in four listed in function or general character?" So that gives some interpretation and latitude to the zoning enforcement officer to determine if someone is presenting something that is of similar character, or to the zoning board, depending on how the use is approved.
And I would, I would think that the past use would also play favorably into that if someone wanted to continue something very similar to that.
No.
No.
No, because the past use is clearly commercial, and it would no longer have a commercial zoning.
Well, the past use, the past use is retail, which is.
Okay, right.
A, an allowed use by special permit under limited business residential.
Yeah.
So potentially, someone could locate a retail location there by special permit. The commercial zone has a different level of permitted uses in intensity and function?
If that's the case, then why wasn't this included in the limited business when it was originally zoned?
I, I don't know.
But there is someone at the microphone who may know that.
Robert Ebersol, 94 Main Street. Actually, that happened after I was on the planning board, and so I can't answer that. Lunenburg zoning was adopted in 1960, there was no zoning before that. And as was said, zoning was done in a way that's not done today with trying to do compatible uses and various things like that. The selectmen voted three to two to support recommending, recommending this article, which shows there's some discussion going on. The concern that those of us who did vote for it was that the commercial district use is too intense for that parcel, namely, the gas station was the, the parcel, the, the most concerned that I had. So what I'd like to have is, is, is some other commercial type use, but not as intense. So the commercial districts are Leominster Shirley Road, Route 2A, down near the Fitchburg Line, and Gleney Hannifers, and other things like that. So that seems to be more appropriate. You know, I would support a commercial use, but not as intensive. There's contractors, work yard, and other things like that that are, as a matter of right. So I support the, the, the more intensive than just residential, but just not commercial. And as I noted, too, that when we're going to the Village District bylaw, we're actually downs, down zoning the Lunenburg Village District, the post office, which is currently zoned, zoned commercial, and that's going to be going down to a lesser allowed use of the Village District, so be consistent. So, commercial type, but not the heavy commercial is what I'd be.
As Mr. Ebersol pointed out, there was discussion at the Board of Selectmen meeting about this, and I was actually one of the individuals who voted against this. I believe when you talk about spot zoning, this is, to me, spot zoning. This is a piece of property that has been commercial, and as was just talked about, the use that existed, at least as long as I've lived in Lunenburg, which is 30 years, my husband lives here, 52, it was a package store, which is retail. So what the rationale behind why it was owned commercial, none of us has a crystal ball that we can go back in time. As was talked about by the planning director, looking at the town as a whole and determining and, and having that exercise of what should be commercial, what shouldn't be commercial, and looking at it methodically and, and figuring out what uses, that I would support. But this exercise of, because people were frightened by the idea of a gas station, which, which is not allowed even as a, as a commercial use without a special permit, which is why the zoning board of appeals, because they felt that particular use was not appropriate, we have safeguards in place to ensure that the butters have an opportunity to speak, that they have an opportunity to be heard, and the power lies with the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, which is appropriate. To simply rezone someone's property that they own and have owned for many, many years as a family-operated business, and to take away that right, to me, is unconscionable. And I don't think that this warrant should, this article should be for the town.
Thanks, Paul. Let's open it up further to, to the, the owner and the public.
Thank you again, Chairman and Board. My name's Al DeWoma, and I'm married to Marsha DeWoma. She's executor of the property. And I just want to give you a little bit of history on this to kind of tell you what we've been through here. When my father-in-law passed away, we were involved in the development in the back. And he truly loved the town, and he wanted 55 and older back there. He didn't want a mess to go back there, and he was willing to take a lot less money to see that for the town. So that was put in, and it took so long, though, he ended up dying six months later. I mean, it just took. I mean, it just took so long to get through, which is normal in towns. So we've had this piece of property, and you have 24 months, once you close a business, to put something else in there. The problem with that property was, there's a six-bedroom house in that property. When you look at it from the road, it doesn't look like that, but they had eight children, and it's big in there. So our problem selling it was, they wouldn't let us sell it to somebody, and I had numerous offers of people buying it, living there, and putting a business in the front. Bike shop, coffee shop, and I couldn't because of this 24-month deal. So that property, though, was zoned commercial. It was really zoned to the end of the lawn. I don't know how, I got the maps here, how it got drug into the driveway of that development because it really doesn't belong there. But it is commercial, and we tried relentlessly to sell it to the right people. The last guy was Gary Archer with Mobil, who owns two stations. And if you know Gary, he's really a good man, and you look at his two stations in Aaron Littleton, and they're very nice stations. But I can understand, you know, we went through that, and the town didn't, although he complied with virtually everything they wanted, the town decided not to do it. I think the people got a little bit scared because they heard he might come back and reapply for it. So we spent maybe, to give you an idea, $118,000 in taxes and upkeep over the last nine years since my father-in-law passed away, to keep the property so it looks respectable, plowed. We didn't rent it, though, because we didn't want the hassle of renting it. So here we are today. So Gary Archer goes away. I've had a couple other people inquire recently about subdividing it and putting something else in there. But this kind of, it kind of took me as surprised because we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. I guess, you know, I don't know if it's valued more commercially, quite frankly, than if it's limited business residential. But if we go to limited business residential, we can never come back, right? And I think you could put a decent business in there on the commercial side of it, but on the other hand, you could also put a couple houses back there, and the building, my question is, if somebody bought it, could probably revamp it and put realtors in there and things like that. So we had the plan submitted from Whitman and Bingham with the commercial and the limited business. So my question to the board is, so where does this stand? I mean, what's the best avenue to take? If, you know, we just want to sell the property to the right person and get it done? You know, I hear these things, and I appreciate what the town says about keeping it, you know, your historic section. I get along with that. I understand that. But on the other hand, if they zoned that to where we couldn't do anything, what do we do? Continue paying the $10,000, $12,000 a year in upkeep for something I can't sell? Maybe Lunenburg would like to buy the facility for their appraised price. I mean, if you want to do that, you're welcome to it. But every few months, I'm sending you guys a couple thousand dollars in taxes, and I'm fighting this battle. So, you know, my father-in-law, World War II veteran, decorated veteran, bought that years ago and developed and ran a good business for 55 years. And I agree with the young lady there that was saying, you know, all of a sudden, somebody doesn't like something, and you know that we've had and we've tried to sell to, but, and you're going to change it. Where does the consideration come in for the Riley family and the Proctor family, who's been in town for over 100 years, of what that person is going through? It's easy to vote things down, but I'm the guy writing the checks continually. We've had it with four or five different realtors. I do have a good prospect right now who's very interested in doing something with it. It happens to be before this night, though, in what we want to decide. So my question is, is the decision going to be made here tonight or later on? Presenting the A&R plan, we presented that, I wanted to do that two or three months ago simply to protect the land, because if you do an A&R plan, you have three years before you can change it. My question is, if, let's say the A&R plan went through as it is. If we came to you at a later time and said, hey, look, we've got somebody who wants to put a couple houses there and do something with the building, would that be allowed, or do we have to wait another whole year to come in front of a board and have changes?
Well, I can answer kind of those questions. The board isn't deciding tonight. This would be decided at a town meeting on May 2nd. They're the only body who can change zoning.
Okay.
If you, if the A&R plan gets approved tonight and somebody decides that they want to take the building down and put three houses in, if you sell them all of that property, they can submit a new A&R. I mean, I've seen properties go through four A&Rs in 12 months. It's re-division and division of property through administrative process, so it's not, there's no waiting to do it.
What I'd like to see is somebody put a couple houses there, because you can do three lots according to where Whitman and Bingham, we did a couple versions of this, and you could have that limited business in there where the gentleman I'm talking with really wants to put like real estate, it would really be nice. We walked through, and he said, I'd hate to take the barn down. You know, it needs a lot of work. You're going to have to put a lot of money into that to get that up. But he said, I'm kind of interested in just keeping the barn, which I think would be nice for the town in the sense that, although it's not historic, it's not bad-looking when you go buy it. But the other alternative would be to file the permit and wait the six months to take it down.
And, you know, should the person you're talking to who is interested want to put professional offices? Those are allowed in the limited business residential as well as the commercial district.
Okay.
Yeah, the zoning change wouldn't make a difference there.
Exactly. But, yeah, I get it. But if he doesn't, then.
So does anybody have an idea of why it was zoned commercial, ever? Do you understand the history of that?
Yeah, well, at the time, you know, he bought all of that property, the 55 acres, the house, the house across the street that was torn down for a parking lot, that was like the sixth oldest house in town that was torn down. But he had the business there, and he had it zoned that way, simply because probably the liquor store at that time and the volume it did maybe fell under that, because it was probably a million-dollar business at one time, and trucks coming in and out. It's not like a realtor, you know?
Do we know if limited business was added after commercial as a, no?
It was there. It was there.
Because it was always fallen under a limited business zoning in its existing use. So why, I'm just curious why.
I think what the difference might be is, in the commercial zone, retail is by right, and in the limited business, it's by special permit. So.
But it was an existing business, so it wouldn't have mattered.
And I understand that, but doing it at the time.
Is that my car?
May have been.
The other thing is that the limited business district did not exist when zoning came in. That was added since 1990.
Okay, I think that's what Ken was asking.
On either side, so this literally was zoned for the property because of the business that existed in 1960. And who knows whether it was done that way in order to get zoning passed, because they tried to get zoning for about 10 years before they did that. So it's possible that we'll zone, so they zoned the center of town commercial where there were businesses at that time. They zoned Whalem Four Corners, Whalem and Electric Ave. They zoned that commercial. So they zoned where the commercial properties were.
Thank you.
Which would then make sense, but I.
So just when they came through with the limited business zoning, they didn't rezone?
I'm surprised that they didn't pull it, yes.
My opinion.
In theory, if someone had asked me to do this today, I would have pulled it in.
Right.
Just run one ribbon and say.
And it would have been one zone, and it would have been contiguous, and it would be limited business, and there would have been no violation.
Correct.
So what we're essentially proposing to do here is put it into that state.
That's correct.
That it should have probably been put into when they came up with the limited business zone.
Correct.
But it doesn't limit a lot of these uses. So the real estate office, all of that stuff, retail, you know, even the existing use as it used to be, you know, when I first moved to town, I used to buy my beer there. And, I mean, that would still qualify as a limited business use. So all of those uses would still fit into this zone. It's an extended commercial use that.
Like, I agree with Bob, you know, putting something in there, ridiculous. I mean, I've had requests for things that are just crazy. And Gary Archer, he was such a good guy and has such nice stations. That's why I really considered him, and I think the town really lost out on a good guy there, because if you look, his stations are small, he's there all the time, I mean. But it is what it is. But I just want to do really what's best for the Riley family at this point, if you can feel our pain. And I'm very encouraged with the gentleman I talked to today about doing something with it. I think we'll put something together. But I just, what I'm saying is, I have a little bit of time before the meeting, right? It is what it is now. Am I correct, Mr. Lockwood, on that?
That you have time before the meeting? Yeah, I believe so. I don't see why not. That's true.
Okay.
If you get an application in, you've got the zoning.
Once the, once the change has been advertised, you could put it in at your own peril, but if it passes, the first advert, you'd have to have applications in and stamp, or I think you might even need to have permits in hand prior to the first advertisement of the alteration.
Sorry. The first advertisement of?
The first legal advertisement of the public hearing.
Okay, so then there isn't time.
Okay, I apologize, so I was wrong. He says.
I was told by Mike Savinjo when I was talking with this, that if I put in a building permit right away, I mean, before last Thursday or something, it protected for six months. And I'm there, I really don't want to go through all of that stuff. And on a high note, I want to tell you, though, Mike Savinjo's been very good really explaining the hard lines and everything else with us through the process over the years. So, but anyway, that's the history of it, and my father-in-law would be turning over in his grave, I went over there before I got here, he probably is, that it would take this long to, you know, all these different roadblocks, because I thought it'd be nice if somebody lived there and had a business, but that's not on the cards. So that's why some people said, we'll sell it and then go for a variance, and that's a lot of money to spend.
So let me ask a couple questions. So thanks for, first of all, for explaining all this to us. So, you know, one of the, even for retail, as we discussed, there would be a difference in that in commercial, that retail use is by right, and limited business, it's special permit. You're talking about, as you talk, you've mentioned several times, uses where there was a combined residential business use, and that's something that I think is actually permitted for some businesses in limited business, but I'm not sure that type of mixed use is allowed in a commercial district, in the sense that, and I'm not trying to push one way or the other here, but I'm saying if that were your goal, to get that type of business in, we'd have to check here, but that might be something that.
It's really only for bed and breakfast and in establishments that you could, you could live and work.
We had a guy that wanted to put a breakfast and lunch there and live there, and it's perfect for that in a sense, and he was shot down.
Shot down by?
There was absolutely no way you could do that. Then we had another guy that wanted to put a bicycle shop.
Is that a restriction on parking, or what? I mean, that didn't come before the ward when I was here, so I'm just curious why it was shot down.
No, Mike Savinjo just said, we can't do that.
It's not applicable by zoning.
Yeah, there's no provisions that allow for combined business residential use. I think that that's a big part of what the discussion and the purpose of putting the village forth was, was to create that mixed use. I think that the only place that it's applicable outside of the proposed village is in the Summer Street overlay.
So even the catering and the B&amp;B stuff here?
Well, the B&amp;B, I think, by definition.
Okay.
Has an owner living there. So if someone wanted to live there and do a breakfast and lunch, they'd have to start renting rooms to qualify under the B&amp;B. And I think that you'd run into something like the Harley House, which, my understanding, was at one point was functioning both as room rental and had a restaurant attached. So that theoretically, if you did it the right way, could fall under the same qualification.
Okay. So essentially, what you're saying is neither district really is very mixed-use friendly, neither commercial nor limited business. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Yes.
You were saying you couldn't have a business and live there, but that happened in the center of town less than 20 years ago, with the flower shop right next to Mary Padula's. The Camerons lived there, and then they put in to have a variance, and they put in a flower shop, and they were in a commercial, they lived there and put a, and lived there as well. And that was within the last 20 years.
Yeah, in fact, we recently just permitted, I think, the antique shop, I think, is both a residence and an antique shop right now.
As well.
I found something in the zoning that speaks to this. 4.4.4.7, "Existing residential buildings shall not be destroyed to permit new construction except for another residential building." So that kind of implies that if you can get a permitted use on one of these other things, and there's an existing home there that you could probably, it implies that you can continue the use and have the new use.
We lost a lot, like Al said, we lost a lot of sales over the last 10 years because we had a lot of people that were interested in putting in a business there and living there as well, because, you know, it's a six-bedroom home, and it's still in decent shape.
Do you know what?
I'm Dave Riley, by the way.
And we were told, somebody, yeah, so I'm Ed Riley's daughter. We were told that after 55 years, because he passed away, and we didn't open up another business there, that nobody could live there and open up the business, that that's the law. And in other words, we could sell it to somebody and say, well, you can buy the house and live there and hope that maybe Lunenburg will let you put your business in the front. Well, no one's going to buy that property hoping that they're going to allow them to put a business there. So we have a huge house with a little storefront, and we can't sell it. So we sell it as a store, and there's a big house in the back. And that's what we've tried to explain since we listed the house.
We've had, a guy wanted to put a bicycle shop in there and live there, another guy wanted to do woodworking with kayaks.
Woodworking and sell his work.
And live there, and it's perfect for the town and community. A bicycle shop, you kidding me?
It's not allowed. This man wasn't going to buy the property and hope that he could have his woodworking business.
And our sales price is very reasonable. It isn't like.
Well below what we're paying taxes on.
It's below the appraised value.
With what we're asking, or trying to get for the property.
So do we, is this a miscommunication or misunderstanding of the regulation, and these types of businesses should be allowed?
Well, it's.
Because, I mean, the zoning discussion that we have before us here, neither one of them incorporates the solution to this problem. So the question is, is the bylaws, the way that they're written today, is there sufficient loophole that because it's a residence, that you can apply for the limited business in addition to the residence and allow the mixed use?
Well, I'm.
Because like I said, you know, like the flower shop right in the center of town, that was in the last 20 years. They're closed now, but, I mean, they were living there and then put an request on the flower shop.
And six months ago, we permitted antique and residence use.
Well, I don't know where, what zone the antique shop is located in, but if it's in the residential zone, there's a provision for a special permit from the zoning board, specifically antique shop and a dwelling or building accessory there, too, provided there's no exterior display except for an accessory sign, and the residential character of the premise is preserved.
But Mary Padula's, if you're talking about that, that was an active business, and now she, you know what happened there. So somebody goes in there, and they apply to live there, and we've been told for 10 years, you just can't do that.
Because that was a res.
Is that in residence A or is that in limited business?
Limited business.
It's in limited business.
And the flower shop is in the limited business. So the problem is, commercial districts don't allow what you allow in limited business to include residential. So ironically, downzoning may actually allow you to do residential and business together.
Thank you, Bob. Had we known that, we would have come to you nine years ago and said, let's do limited business, guys.
Right, but it is, it is, it does qualify. You can do it.
So we were told that they would have to buy it as a home first and live there and then apply.
So Adam, to that question, hypothetically, let's hypothetically say that our limited district hypothetically did support this type of basic mixed use. If, with a special permit for the.
We're still not saying that.
No, I know, it's hypothetical. If, in that situation, if they were to come forward as sellers with. with a plan that was something that basically a buyer wanted to do and got approval of the plan from the ZBA?
Well, you know, you see a lot of commercial real estate sold, and some residential real estate sold with contingencies in the PNS that all necessary town approvals are granted prior to closing. So essentially what you do is you sign the purchase and sale and that gives somebody the right to make the application for their variance or special permit, you know, as an agent of the owner. And they can go through that process. And so you kind of get both. You get somebody on the hook to buy it and they're not out anything other than that initial deposit while they go through the process of, you know, song and dance to find out if what they want to do is going to, you know, is going to pass muster. So that's something that you see sometimes. Again, I'll have to speak with Mike because I'm not seeing anything in here that alludes to the mixed use. I don't know with the Harley House if there's some special permit that was granted based on the fact that the bed and breakfast was considered residential and business mixed. And so they, from one non-conforming to another, that all kind of happened prior to me getting here. So I don't know what the approvals and impetus for that were. And as far as Padula 20 years ago, I wouldn't even begin to speculate.
So with the A and R plan that we presented today, what's the procedure on that? Is that something you look at tonight or?
The board has a procedure where they, I'll take it back to the office, distribute it amongst the town departments. They'll have the opportunity to make comment. And on the 27th, they'll take up the signature of that. So two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
And then that'll be signed. You or your engineer will have the opportunity to come and pick up the Mylar, take it to the registry in Fitchburg, record it. And that would create the two lots. And then you'd have to work with your attorney to draw up new deeds and titles.
Providing it was approved, it can get shot down.
Anything can get shot down. An A and R is an administrative division of property. As long as you have frontage and meet the requirements, the board is essentially obligated to sign it. I don't see anything on what you're proposing that would create that issue.
But now, Adam, it's based on commercial, so it would stay as such?
It's a, no. Because the, tonight's the official filing of the A and R because the rules and regulations require it to be presented at a planning board meeting to be considered officially filed. And it's after the first advertising date of the public hearing.
So we made it or we didn't make it?
Did not make it.
So what was the sense in presenting that then? It's my question, if this change goes on?
The A and R? Okay, the A and R process is simply land division. It's completely irrespective of zoning.
Right. So you have two lots. If this goes through, you'll, you can sell two lots independent of each other. It doesn't have any impact on whether one of those lots remains commercial or gets rezoned to limited.
Okay, and with Whitman and Bingham, though, we did another plan on the lot. And it complies to be able to put three lots in there, actually with a flag lot.
Okay.
So if we had a buyer that wanted to do that, there'd be a lot on one side, a flag lot on the other. And then the middle, the builder would have an opportunity to either A, take the building down or revamp it, right? So if that discussion happens in the next week, can we pull this and just present another A and R plan?
Sure.
So we're not in jeopardy, except for losing the commercial aspect of it.
And the double application.
And, you know, honestly, if the board signs this in two weeks, we give you the Mylar. You're under no obligation to run to the registry the next day and record it. I would suggest if you're going to, if you are going to record it, you do it sooner rather than later. After six months, the registry won't take it. But you could take it and say, "You know what? We're not going to do this. We're not going to pay the fee to record it. We want to do these three lots." And then you just submit that in the same way.
Okay.
It would be the same process.
And also understand that with the limited business zoning, it does open up some other opportunities for people that would want to buy the property.
Honestly, if we could have had somebody living there and live in business, we would have sold it eight years ago. I mean, we had a guy that was just hot on the thing and at a decent price at the time. And we were just told, "No, can't do it."
Just to be clear, it sounds like Adam needs to investigate the limited business a bit more. The unfortunate thing is that the Village Center District we're putting in now, not to change the topic, it does explicitly have mixed-use provisions that would work really well for this. But that's another topic.
I have a comment on that. I think we may be getting hung up on semantics because mixed use has recently come into our vocabulary because of the Village Center. Well, I mean, if you look at the name of the district, it's limited business slash residential district. That practically implies to me that it is mixed use.
And it certainly doesn't distinguish between, when this was written, it's not, doesn't clearly distinguish between the mixed, the clearly mixed-use uses like B and B and in and catering.
Again, mixed use is simply a term. It's a term.
I'm agreeing with you.
Okay. But just because it doesn't explicitly say mixed use, it doesn't explicitly disallow?
It also strongly implies mixed use in at least some of the uses.
And in the name in itself.
I think we're getting into zoning interpretation, which is outside of what? I mean, we can certainly speculate all we want. But I think a conversation with the building inspector is the quickest avenue to sussing out what this is.
And maybe that's a simple question, just asking. If it was zoned limited business, would we be able to?
And that's the conversation I'll have, especially if the Harley House falls in the limited business. I think the way I read the title of the chapter, it's limited business slash residential, meaning residential is by right and there are some limited business uses that you can have there. You're right, there are some in there that are by definition mixed use. You know, they have a residential component to them. Whether or not the single-family home and the business by special permit can be sort of mashed into one approval is something that I'd like some clarification on.
Gotcha.
That makes sense. Do you think, just, we're going to be going into town meeting in a couple of weeks. We'll probably have to make a recommendation. I don't know, do you think you might be able to get some clarity around that?
Yeah, I should be able to do that next day or two.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, if you could distribute that, that'd be awesome. So what's the process here? Certainly, if anyone in the public, I want to definitely continue if you have more to say. Paul, come on up.
One of the questions that I had, initially, the Village Center District went down. I think it encompassed this property. What was the rationale behind pulling that back? Because I just look at that area and I look at some of the businesses. We've got North Middlesex Savings Bank. We have Workers Credit Union. We have Conrad's Drive-In. There are several businesses there that are in existence. And I'm just questioning why, as was stated, this is a property that's perfect for mixed use, which is what you're trying to encourage in the Village Center District. What was the rationale behind pulling that back?
I think before we had our language completely worked out, people saw the way it was written in draft form, reacted to our larger area and wished that we would reel ourselves in.
Yeah, honestly, I think that some of my first initial suggestions were to reel it in. They were well beyond a half mile on all of the Village Center District. It extended in almost all directions, more than a half mile. You're talking village district, you're talking a center district. You wanted something that's walkable. Generally, if you talk to transportation people and planners, a quarter mile is considered walkable. And, you know, you're talking about a district where you want to create a density of use based, you know, to create some civic engagement, some areas where people are being active and vibrant. If you start stretching that change in allowable use out to that many properties in that much distance, you may open it up where there would be more interaction. But I think you eliminate the village feel of the district because what you do is you get a smattering of uses and it might be successful on individual properties. But as a holistic district, it loses its success because you're not getting things that are working together in the area that you've outlined. You might get, you know, something on all the different points. And so the idea is create some density at the center of it. And if it starts to become successful and you start to find that there's areas that would fold into it, you start to do a zoning expansion of that district.
My question, Adam, regarding her statement was, that property was commercial before Conrad's, before the church, before any of those businesses, all the way down past Walmart. And when Walmart went out up there, I'll give you an idea. It really put my father-in-law out of business. He remortgaged like three times just to stay in his house. Nobody seemed to care. I mean, it was a business. But are there other commercial pieces you're looking at to do the same thing? Or are you just specifically saying, "We don't like the Riley's down there. We're going to?"
Well, it has nothing to do with the individuals. It's a look at that corridor as limited business.
But shouldn't we be grandfathered simply because historically, we were there before everybody?
Well, grandfathering is a term that deals with use based on zoning. So if the town feels that it should continue to be commercial, then they'll deny the change at town meeting.
It'll be voted up or down there.
Correct. Since there isn't an active use on the site, it can't be grandfathered.
Well, but we saw some of the reasons we didn't have the active use. We've been denied.
Correct. And I understand that. And, you know, if, when you originally closed the business, you had the mixed use with the living and the business, that could at the time have been extended by special permit.
We didn't because we didn't know about it, Adam.
No, and I understand that. But what I'm saying is, within that 24-month period, you had an existing non-conforming use that could have, through special permit, been extended.
As a coffee shop or something.
Whatever it happened to be. And now that's gone because the use has been abandoned. So, and there will be a comprehensive look at the zoning bylaws and the way that properties are zoned throughout town.
Okay. I appreciate your time, gentlemen, and hearing our dilemma in a sense, but.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming down to explain it to us and all the details.
Just one more comment on understanding. I think the key to this conversation and having it flushed out before town meeting is going to be key. Understanding the limitations of limited business. Not only the Harley House, but as was mentioned, the Flower Barn, which was owned by the Camerons, I believe, which is right next to the Harley House, was a residential home that then went through the special permit process to have a flower shop. And it was certainly a retail operation. So understanding what the benefits are, were it to be rezoned to limited business, and understanding what the potential uses are, I think, is going to be key for the Riley's in determining what position they take at town meeting. As well as, as a voter, understanding what opportunities are opened up for the Riley's and what doors are closed.
Yeah, because certainly myself particularly, I want to see every one of the small business be successful. And I think we, in the future, should even look at our limited business district and make it more clear that owner-occupied businesses are allowed. Because I certainly think that's something we should strive for in town.
And I had no issue, I mean, I had no idea this issue was existing. I wish as soon as you had encountered this problem, you had come to the planning board at the time and said, "Okay, what are we supposed to do? What needs to be put in effect to address this issue?" Because then you wouldn't have spent nine years dealing with it. You know, I'm sorry, I mean, I wasn't there at the time. But sorry that you've gone through that.
I have one more comment on this, and it's kind of on the flip side of this whole issue, is that both trailer parks on Mass Ave have been rezoned as commercial, rather spottily. So, I mean, that's kind of on the flip side of the coin. But they were, they were considered what, outlying or residence B?
So?
And they've since been rezoned as commercial.
So part of the reason the town did that, and that was before I was on the planning board, they didn't like trailer parks, mobile homes, manufactured housing, whichever you want to call it. So they put them in a commercial district.
So that discrimination was okay?
That's what the town voted at the time. Zoning over the years has been exclusionary. Let's keep people, let's keep uses apart. I think this board is moving in the right direction to incorporating in the mixed, the term mixed use. The concept of housing here, commercial here, is what the zoning was in the 60s. And now it's commercial here, housing here. So there's a lot of things that your new land use director is going to be working with you as the planning board to fix a lot of these things.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, and I think things that make sense for certain reasons at certain times don't make as much sense later. And what might have been a protective thing of the town center when they adopted limited business, now we're seeing the flip side and the limitations of. So what's the process-wise, if we want to have a board discussion, do we leave the public hearing open? Do we?
Do you want to get more clarification on what a limited business allows and extend the public hearing or?
It's not what I want. It's what you want. It's your public hearing. I'm here to guide and help you. I think that you can do multiple things. You can continue the public hearing to the 27th.
That's what I'd like to, I'd like to hear what?
You'll have to write a report for town meeting. Or I'll have to write a report for town meeting if you do that. You can close the public hearing, make a motion, have discussion under the motion. But you can't take additional evidence once you've done that.
I don't think we want to do that.
I don't think we can possibly deliberate without having the information that we need defining what limited business residence allows, right?
If, yeah. I'd like to understand that with regards to the Harley House and this flower shop and similar uses to that. I want to know if that is something that is granted by the zoning.
Well, in that case, I'd suggest someone moves to continue the public hearing until a date and time certain.
Second.
Well, when would you like to continue it to?
To the next meeting.
April 27th.
27th.
At?
7 o'clock, 7:30. Sound good? 7:30?
Yeah, I'll take a minute, second, I'm not going to ask. I'm going to take, move to vote. Hang on one moment.
I would suggest we move it to 6:35.
That sounds good.
Unless we're starting the meetings at 7:30?
No, I would, I make a motion that we continue the hearing to the next planning board meeting on the 27th at 6:35.
Perfect.
Second.
All right, before we vote on that, a couple of things. One is, can we discuss tonight, even after we do the continuance or during it, before we do the continuance? Can we discuss this issue as a board at all?
Well, I think we decided we need more information, right?
I'd say if you're going to continue the hearing, no, your discussion is over. Once the hearing is continued, once the vote, once the vote happens, the hearing is over.
How about before we continue it?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, the hearing's open. You can discuss all that you want. You have other business coming.
Okay, so, okay, we got a motion on the floor. We have a member of the public who has something to say, so please come on up.
Well, you have a motion on the floor. You'd have to have the motion withdrawn.
I withdraw. Thanks.
Thank you. In the consideration of the limited business with, living in the business, just one other, you know, we mentioned the antique place at Mary Padula's. We mentioned the flower shop. There's also right in the center of town, that was just within the last few years, you have a working sawmill right in the center of town. So.
The sawmill is?
Home occupation?
Well, it's in the residential zone and it's on 20 acres. And there's some, my understanding is older provision within zoning that allows it as a add-on to an agricultural use. The property is over the five acres that qualifies for agriculture. So there's a series of exemptions and additional uses that fall under that.
Okay, as well as rate of fund.
Yeah.
E, there's a home occupation provision that allows some amount of these. I'd have to dig up the details, but yes, it's a point taken. So just, well, we're, just something to think about as a board. You know, it was, Paul mentioned, you know, the VCD is a potential way out. And I appreciate it, Adam's, what Adam's saying. And I think Adam did the right thing by recommending in general us reeling it in because we didn't just have it extended down Mass Ave here. We had it, we had it.
I mean, it went up Northville Road, it went up Oak Street, it went down both Lancaster and Lancaster.
Yeah, I was trying to cover Page Street too, but no one was willing to go quite that far.
Yeah, it went up, down, and around. Yeah, there was more center than village at that point. But the, so I guess, though, here's just, I'm just looking at this. We have a limited business here, it abuts the Village Center. It's like Village Center light with like 50 times murkier language. De facto, the dilution effect is potentially there anyways because it allows a certain amount of business.
Sure, and I, you know, I think the point is well-taken that there should be a significant exploration of how to introduce residential and commercial properties that work together. We're a small town. There, it's not, you know, we're not going to function in a way like a Fitchburg or a Leominster where we're going to get massive businesses in most parts of town and offering opportunities, probably through a special permit process, that sort of reins in how they work and, and how they're designed and how they function. But these opportunities, I think, offer more opportu, more business opportunities for people who would like to move into town and, and for probably a greater variety of business than we're currently looking at and addressing.
Yeah, no, definitely. And I guess, I think that the VCD... So, I guess what I'm going with this is, I think it, without reintroducing the full sprawling VCD we're talking about, maybe having, considering preparing an amendment that would allow for the town to consider as an alternative to reverting this to limited district, amending the VCD map to include out to that region.
I would advise against that, yeah. I mean, I think that we're talking, you know, at this point, we've had so many discussions about, let's change this, let's change that. At some point, we have to just stop and say, this is, this is the bylaw. We need to put it forward, we need to have it stand. And, you know, this is, it's not as if this is one property off of where the Village Center is. I mean, this is a significant distance to, to, to pull that map. I think that if, if there's great concern about this and the board isn't going to support it, then maybe it's better to just pull this article, leave it as it is and, and address it in a, in a different way as you look through, through the bylaws in the future.
Well, I'm not sure that we want, first, I think we have to get the information.
I agree.
Because I, I think if actually rezoning it to limited business helps them sell it and it can be utilized in the same kind of fashion that it's, it was utilized in this mixed sense, then I, I think it would make perfect sense to go forward with, with the rezoning because that opens up the opportunity for it to, to be easily sold. All right, so I, I think we have to get that information from...
And see if this zoning change is going to help or hurt them. That's what I want. I'd like to find that out before we...
They'll make a determination whether we should move forward with it or address it via another mechanism.
I, I agree, yeah. What I'm saying is, if, if the intent is to not do this and to present an alternative of altering the Village District, I don't, I don't think that that's a viable...
I don't think that's a viable option either.
Not, not this late.
Well, and that's exactly it, you know, we're two weeks from town meeting, that's...
It's not going to happen.
You know, that, that just adds too much confusion and potential chaos to, you know, something that, that has been worked on very hard and tuned to it, to a good degree.
That's a fair point. I, yeah, that's, just the other thing I'd add is, I think whatever happens with this, with this particular thing here, and I agree, we need the information, we need to make a decision and all that. I think we probably would all agree, based on what I'm hearing, that limited business district needs to be replaced or overhauled or something.
I, I think it needs to be overhauled. I think that, you know, honestly, all of your zoning districts, all of our zoning districts need to be overhauled.
Except the Village District.
That doesn't exist yet. So, on May 3rd, I will say that.
Need some voting on.
But I, I think that there's...
But it could serve as a model for the rest of it.
Yeah, but I think that there's a confusing set of uses. I think that the lack of a use table is just such a detriment to actually navigating the protective bylaw. And I also think that some of the ways that, I mean, the commercial district specifically is written makes it difficult to look at something and say, okay, I can do this or I can't do it because you're flipping back and forth between other districts. So, I think that there's some, some significant tuning that can be done to make it a, an easier document to use.
Any, any more discussion from the public on this tonight? All right, entertain motions of various flavors?
Yeah, but I, first off, I want to just point out that the Residence A, Residence B, and the Outlying District all allow inns by special permit, inns in boarding houses, private groups, hospitals, antique shop, public use, not specifically listed, private club, sales room, boatyard, on and on and on. And I would think that we would, we would assume that that would be a mixed use, not exclusive of residential.
I agree. That, I, I think those fall under the home occupation clause that, that Nathan was talking about.
I, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing to April 27th at 6:35.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, thanks again for coming out and we'll, yeah, hopefully be, see you in a couple of weeks. All right, next agenda item. Next agenda item is minutes approval.
No.
Nope.
Skip the public hearing.
Oh, sorry about that. Let's, I apologize. Next agenda item is Highfield Village Public Hearing. Ken and Damon, Ken and Damon?
That's Matthews.
This is, oh, Matthew, thank you.
Yours has your name on it, man. Fancy, she means. Yours is special copy.
Well, since you took your folder home, that's your supplemental.
I'll write it back.
All right, that's, that's additional information.
All right, Ken, will you open us up on this one and read that cover page for us?
This here?
Yes, sir.
I gotta read.
If you don't mind.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold the public hearing on November 10th, 2014, 6:35 PM, Town Hall. 17 Main Street, Mass, to hear and discuss definitive plan per the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Section 5.6, Cluster Development of the Protective Bylaw of the Town of Lunenburg. This application is to construct 66 dwelling units off the south side of Northfield Road between Massachusetts Avenue, MAP 057, Parcel 0031, and Northfield Road, MAP 037, Parcel 0009. Owners are John and David Saliba, 227 Lewis Wharf, Boston, Mass, 02110, and Robert Liverone, Trustee, Lunenburg Nominee Trust, 880 Winter Street, Suite 340, Waltham, Mass, 02451. Applicant is IEG Holding LLC, 46 Prince Street, PO Box 5515, Beverly, Mass, 01915. Copies are en filed in the planning office. Notice of said hearing will be duly posted in the usual posting places.
Thank you, Ken. All right, so, let's see, so I guess we're going to open this up here. Should we get it...
I would open it to the applicant.
Okay. Would the applicant please come forward?
Yes, good evening, board members. I'm John Godfrey and I, I speak for the developers of this project. We were last here approximately six weeks ago, I think.
February 23rd.
And at that time, we were, we had, had delivered to us a letter from the Town's Consulting Engineer, David Ross and Associates, which commented on our plans and asks for, asked for responses. That letter had been dated November 3. It contained 157 items, large and some large, some minor, to be addressed. And we have subsequently started addressing those items. And in fact, I had hoped to come here tonight, ask you to close the public hearing and to say that all items had been addressed to the satisfaction of your consulting engineer or conceivably with one or two open items for board discussion. In fact, our engineer, who's not present here tonight because he's fighting pneumonia, has had some health issues over the time. And leading me as the developer to have to weigh the advisability of perhaps bringing some assistance from a different engineering firm, or sticking with my engineer, who's, we all know Kent Oldfield is a bit of a one-man show. So, I've given, of the 157 items, 50 are now deemed addressed by Ross and Associates in a letter dated April 6. And on a secondary review, Ross and Associates, mainly on some surveying items, has found additional items. So, what, what, as the representative, representative of the developer, I have done is, I have discussed this with Mr. Oldfield and I've given him until April 22nd to answer in a way that will satisfy Ross and Associates each and every remaining outstanding item. Now, if that should not occur, I have gone forward tentatively with a Plan B, which is to engage an engineering firm to provide some additional assistance to get this done. I mean, it's been long enough, it's been way too long, and now I want it done. And so, I've been to see Weston and Sampson. The board may be aware, or the board should be aware, that Weston and Sampson is knowledgeable on this, on this project because Weston and Sampson reviewed, as the Town's Consulting Engineer, the sewer plants for the sewer board. So, that the, any items related to the sewer have been commented upon by Weston and Sampson. So, I, in addition to reporting this progress, which is not as much as I had hoped for as of today, I wanted to request of the board whether the board would see any kind of a conflict if Weston and Sampson were asked to assist in the resolution of the outstanding items on these plants, which they are, which they are willing to do and which they don't see as any kind of a conflict with their prior work, which has a review of something which was done and is now completed and in the file. So, I leave you with that report. I'd, I'd leave you with a request to continue the public hearing until the first meeting in May. And I will come back at that time. And I will either say that Mr. Oldfield, indeed by April 22, as I challenged him, has completed the plans, turned them over to Ross and Associates, or at that time, I will say that, provided you see no objection, that, that I've engaged a somewhat more higher horsepower engineering firm to get this across the, the finish line and resolve what are actually, although numerous, many minor technical issues, for the most part, on a, a plan that is fairly large and fairly complicated. So, that's my, that's my statement and that, those are my sort of two requests for the board this evening. And in addition to that, if there are members of the public who have other questions relating to the project, I will answer those as best I can.
Thank you. So, I got a question for, for Adam regarding the request to extend to the first meeting in May. There's going to be, so, there's going to be turnover on this board, most likely, unless I don't understand the process, because I'm not running for, for reelection. There is an election on, I believe, the 11th, 16th of May. So, what would happen if, let's say, the public hearing got continued from, I guess, what, what meeting would that be?
When's the first meeting? May 11th.
So, if the, if it got continued from May 11th, when, what would... So, we have three members who, I mean, I think Matt's running on a post. Go out on limb and say he's going to still be sitting there.
Big chances.
Hopefully, he votes himself.
Ken and Damon will still be here, so you'll have three.
Correct. So, what would happen is, any new membership would be ineligible to participate in the project. But you can approve a subdivision with three people. So, you would need all three of them to vote for it, but it could be a...
Okay.
And as far as Weston and Sampson, I think the only caution that I would put out there, or the only thing that I would expect would be that the person who did the review for the town would not be the engineer stamping plans or doing the majority of the work, just as, as a matter, of course.
Yes, and I actually considered that. And of course, the, the fellow who did that, Steve Peterson, is the person at Weston Sampson, who I know the best because of my dealings with him. So, he, when I went there, he brought in an engineer, actually two, who are, who, who he felt would be most suitable at that firm to work on this project. And he, he's a bit of a sewer guy himself, so he would not be the person to, to work on it. But nonetheless, they have, they have a lot of history with the project.
Yeah, and, and you know, a firm like that, there's gen, it's not, you know, it's not a small shop. They can generally find somebody who hasn't had their hands in the project and just more of a word of caution and advisement more than anything.
Right.
And other than that, you know, they have a good reputation. I don't think there's any issue with, with Weston Sampson.
Sounds good. So, so we're in the public hearing process.
Correct.
The public hearing won't be closed. If the public hearing, the outcome of the public hearing is going to be an affirmative decision? A negative decision? Is there any...
An affirmative decision with conditions.
Affirmative decision with condition, is there's no, no decision?
No. You, you don't have that option.
Okay, so basically, okay, gotcha. So, basically...
As for the three out of three versus three out of five, we don't regard this as a, I guess, we do regard this as a situation where if we comply with the rules, then we're permitted to do what we're seeking to do. And the 157 points are all about defining the rules in the view of the town. And it's, it's, I think the town knows us well enough by now to know that it's our, our approach is to fully comply with the rules. So, I, I don't, I would be disappointed if we required, if there were five voting members and we required three and we had two voting negative. I would, I would regard that as a, an unfortunate commentary that perhaps we hadn't done our work quite right because we'd like it to be clear that we've complied with, with all of the, the rules in town. That's, that's what we're trying to do.
Absolutely. I, I just want to make sure that everybody, including myself, understood procedurally how this weird transitional situation would, could play out in different ways with respect to the project. But, no, I understand what you're saying.
What, what is the other option there? Is it, would, would they have to withdraw and then resubmit to have it heard by all five?
That would be correct, and that would be if we have five members.
Right, okay.
You know, with only one person expressing interest in three seats, I would expect that we're looking at July or August before we have a full complement after advertising and the public hearing or public interview process where...
Sure.
So, you know, and I think that it should be noted that that puts this board in some jeopardy with issues revolving around special permits. There may be statutory time limit issues if someone were to file a special permit within that timeframe of there being only three members.
So, this is, this has gone through a couple of times prior to this board, as well as I understand things correctly.
Yes.
So, that is one of the concerns that actually I have with regards to this. As I was looking through some more of this material... through some more of this material. Some of it dates back pretty old, right? So I mean, it was originally done in 2005. I looked at the traffic study, and the traffic data was from 2007. So I mean, a lot of this becomes kind of obsolete as far as what today's numbers would be, or what today's expectations would be. So how does, how does that come into play?
They're.
It seems like it's taking a really, really long time to go through.
Oh, I agree. I think that this is, I'm finding this is not unusual in the town of Lunenburg. I'm a little surprised that a decade is how long it's taken to move from preliminary to where we are in the definitive at this point.
And there's still lots, I mean, still lots of unanswered questions, and lots of like.
Where we're at now is the first detailed review, and you had asked for an accounting of what the issues were at the in-house technical review. I did pass a memo around tonight, I think they may be sitting in front of Damon.
No.
Oh, did they make them all the way down? It looked like there was two pieces of paper there. And I sort of outlined what I was able to glean as the global issues that were identified in the in-house technical review. And, you know, I call them global because they're the, all right, here's the site that you wanna do this at, here's the general issues with locating something like this at that site. And then when they present a definitive plan, it goes to a peer review engineer, and they look at every line, every design, every invert, every elevation, and they do an analysis of whether or not it, the information's complete, the information's accurate, if the information on the plan sheet and the information on the profile match up. And, you know, I think that what they're producing is a set of construction documents, essentially. They need to be able to bring these to a contractor, hand them the role plans, and say, "Build this." And they need to be able to go out and reasonably build it. Now, there's always gonna be an issue that comes up where this doesn't make sense, or we started doing this and it's just not gonna work. And that's just construction. But I think what we're seeing with the 157-plus comments now is that there's a lot of, a lot of the small bits aren't adding up in a lot of different places. And I think that it's not an insurmountable thing, but moving forward, that all needs to be addressed.
Right.
And I think that the final comments relating back to the survey, honestly, I think might be the most concerning, because the survey work is actually locating where everything exists in reality. And if you read the comments at the, at the very tail end of the Ross letter, there's some questions about lot closures. How the boundaries were determined, where the boundaries are, and are they finding the right places where they meet. And without that information, you could have the best set of plans in the world, and when you go out to build it, you might build it in the wrong place. And it might not work the, I mean, it's gonna probably work, but it might be all askew, and whether it's on somebody else's property, what the town gets, how the assessment works, there can be issues. And, you know, then when somebody goes out to do a final as-built survey, you know, how is that all gonna line up, and how is it all gonna work? So I think really where we're at right now is making sure that the plans are in a place that we're sure that someone can actually create what they're proposing.
Mm-hmm.
And that it's done in a way that protects the public safety of everybody. Not just, you know, fire, police, and driving, but where's the effluent going, and how is the stormwater being handled, and, you know, are we gonna build it in the right place?
Right.
And I think that we're, we're moving in that direction. I think that there's just a lot of, a lot of details that need to be smoothed.
That's my concern, though, is that we're getting down to some detail level, and some of the macro issues that originally brought up, like, you know, traffic is a classic example. It's, it was one of the original things raised here, and it was one of the biggest public comments that we got when we started talking about this. And, you know, I brought it up at MJTC, and they really said, "Oh yeah, that even the traffic over at Route 13 and 2A, that intersection should be studied as a result of the traffic flows coming out of this." Do we, can we get a refresh of that with, you know, 2015 or 2014 data as opposed to 2007 data?
Well, it depends on how the Montezos MPO does their traffic counting. I haven't dealt with their traffic counting. I know Central Mass MPO does a three-year cycle, so every town gets counted every three years. And there's specific sites that they have determined should be counted every year. And then the town, depending on the size of it, gets a couple of additional locations that they think are important. So you may be dealing with 2010 information, because they count in the summer, so actually maybe 2011.
2013.
And you're right, it would be, it would be better information.
Yeah, I think it's actually been revised twice since.
If it was 2007, and they do it on, and I don't, again, I don't know how Montezos does it. If it's a three-year cycle, you're right, it would have been 10 and then 13. You can certainly ask for a reaccounting. The issue might come, well, not might come, but they have a, an approved EIR, correct? So there was traffic considerations in that, in general, based on the Mass Highway Section 16 findings. And I'm going to go out on a limb and say that that's what created the Chase Road conduit I don't, I haven't seen a copy of the final certificate, so I can communicate with John and see if we can get that.
One of, one, excuse me, one specific traffic issue is that the development has been asked and has agreed to some turning lanes for the intersection of Northfield Road and Route 13.
13.
And we've provided for conduit, or for, we've provided the underpinnings for lights, and with the understanding that if the traffic volume mandated it, that we would install lights. I believe that's what we have agreed to. So if, if a, at least the board would know that we have provided for dealing with an occasion of increased traffic flow, if, I mean, that's thought of in advance.
So if we have to do that, so who pays for that traffic study, then, for us to determine? Because we have to go to the state with the traffic study showing that we need the lights in order to get the lights put in on the highway.
Well, the, the EIR, the final EIR, should have had a traffic study included in it. So if they were, the, the final was approved in 2013, I would go out on a limb, oh, this, I do have a copy of it, this certificate of EIR, March 6, 2013. So it's probably using the 2010 data. You could request that the applicant do it as part of the current approval. I think that you might be on somewhat tenuous ground, since they've performed it in the past. If, honestly, if you were making the case for lights at Northfield and Chase, you'd probably put that, you'd probably be proposing that under the tip.
Yep.
And having DOT pay for it, and they would do the counts to determine whether or not it met warrants.
I thought we had, I thought we had to provide that, but.
Well, you could probably get the counts done as part of the regional transportation counting project.
Okay.
I have a question. I guess it's procedural. This is not a, this is a cluster development, the application under cluster development?
Mm-hmm.
Now, that's not a special permit? I didn't see anywhere that it said it was a special permit.
I don't believe it is. My understanding was cluster was a by right development.
Okay, now, the regulations, the Mass General Law stipulating the membership all having been in on the proceedings, is that only for special permit? There's, there's a, it's not Mullen law, but it was some other case law that stipulated that a member who was not there from the beginning of the application process can sign an affidavit, having stated that they've caught up on all the material?
No, you can't do that with Mullen. If you weren't on the board, you can't catch up.
Well, I'm not sure Nathan was even on the board when this first came.
I think that what we're looking at is, all the information has been provided to the board, and the hearing was essentially advertised and restarted in November, because we started essentially from scratch. They came in with a set of development plans. The hearing was advertised and noticed, 7 and 14, and all the abutters were notified prior to.
The abutters list from 2003?
Uh, no, there was a new abutters list generated.
There was?
Yes.
The current?
Correct.
Okay, how about the, was there an ORAD, an ANRAD submitted with an, with an ORAD, Order of Resource Area Delineation?
Well, that would, that's one of the issues. They do need to firm up with conservation.
Not with us, but that's expired by now.
Correct. So that would be something that they would need to do and provide.
And can I get a repetition of what we request? Because I don't, I think that we requested a lot of documents at the last public hearing of Mr. Oldfield, and I don't think that I've gotten anything. I think we got, we asked for the traffic report, we asked for the EIR.
We got the traffic report. That was, that was the only thing I saw.
Well, I, we have the EIR in the office. I have it here tonight. It's, well, this is the draft. Well, this is, I mean, this is not a document that's going to scan and distribute easily. You are more than welcome at any time to come and view the document. It's, it's available.
All right. Well, the subdivision regulations also stipulate that we're supposed to get stamped and signed copies of the plans.
Correct.
And I have not gotten those after over a year asking for them. I got half a PDF. We finally gotten them now.
We finally have stamped plans.
But I, no, not on the website. Those aren't stamped.
Oh, is the PDF not stamped?
Oh, I don't just, I don't, I don't disbelieve that we.
No, they are not. The review engineer has the stamped and signed plans.
The regulations state that all the board members are supposed to get that as well. Then there's, of course, the dead-end length, the single access, I mean, all these things that have been discussed by previous board members.
Well, I think that this project is not considered a dead end based on the service access road for emergency vehicles, because it's not a single access point. There is an access point for emergency vehicles off of Massachusetts Avenue. Now, I'm, again, speculating on whether or not there was a formal vote on that, but it's not a, there is 7,000, almost 8,000 linear feet of road, and I believe that the design of the alternative entrance eliminates the dead-end length, because the dead-end length is generally concerned with access for emergency vehicles and response time, either in or out, and having the secondary access eliminate some of that.
So a fire truck's gonna fit up the secondary access?
That was the point of the design of the secondary access.
1,850 feet dead-end length before it gets to the first intersecting road, which is just a loop.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, it's been seven years since the withdrawal and resubmission. The preliminary and the definitive application are meant to cover the costs of the administrative paperwork and the work done by the town to listen and hear and go forth, but they certainly not meant to cover seven years.
I would agree.
And of the 40-some-odd extensions, I think the last one was the first one that they paid for, because we recently made a new filing, a fee for extensions.
Where are you going with this? Let's wrap it up.
I'm not gonna vote for this. And if it requires three people, it's not gonna pass. I would, I would, I would hope that the applicant would withdraw and resubmit when everything is together. I mean, this 156 review comments from David Ross in November 3rd was responded to on December 2nd by Mr. Oldfield, and officially responded to on April 6th, again by David Ross. 86 of the 156 comments remained unaddressed, less than half were addressed. There's four waiver requests that I'm pretty sure we asked to find out what they were last meeting. I don't, I still have no idea what, I mean, I know what they were, but I don't know what was filed for them. I don't know what, what kind of justification there was for the fact that they were, in fact, benefit to the town of Lunenburg. There's 10 not reviewed, 10 of the 156 comments were not re-reviewed. Those were all due to do with the sewer. Mr. Mottarella, the surveyor, had 40 additional comments, which obviously were not addressed. And of the 86, of the 70 comments that were addressed, 14 of them were only partially addressed. I mean, which, which leaves well over 100 review comments by the design engineer, and we're getting ready to pull the trigger. I mean, it's what it sounds.
I.
I mean.
I don't know if you're getting ready to pull the trigger. I don't know, based on the review letter, there's no part of me that would recommend that the board move towards closure. I think that there's significant issues that need to be addressed. I think that they're not insurmountable issues. I don't think that your request for a withdrawal of an out-of-bounds or off-the-wall thing, I think that, you know, it's been illustrated that there's a significant delay in return of information, and that there's maybe a less than comprehensive addressing of review comments. And you're right, the administrative fees are not designed to cover seven years of administrative work and, you know, continuances up into the tens.
I mean, it's been five months alone since the 156 comments came out.
So I think, though, at some point, we kinda are where we are in the process. The public hearing's open. There's open issues that need to be resolved. If he resolves them.
I mean, that's, that's up to the board. The board has to make a decision where their line in the sand is.
Can we decide to just close it and vote on it as it is?
Sure.
And then if they wanna bring it forward again, they just start new?
Mm-hmm.
Because, I mean, we've, we've seen it now, and other boards have seen it many times.
Would there be a benefit to the applicant by withdrawing rather than getting a negative?
I think I would need to review the position with respect to the EIR, which, as you see, is a very considerable document. And I would need to be sure, and I don't know that as I stand here presently, whether a resubmission could make use of the EIR, which is already approved. So if, if you were to, if you were to see the way clear for the continuance that I requested, I would know that by the time I came back. And if, if upon returning in May, it seemed that, that we're going to be numerous things to answer, and that it was going to take a long time, if I weren't prejudiced on the EIR, I would certainly consider to withdraw and resubmit. But I'd, I'd like to know the position on that before I do it.
I, I don't know for sure. I believe if you're submitting the same project, the EIR may need to be at least re-reviewed, and there may be additional findings based on updated information, but I don't think it would be as extensive. But I'm, I'm not 100% sure. I've never had to refile an EIR myself.
I would, I would need, I would probably need legal advice on that.
That's my concern, is we're making a decision on a lot of old data now.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, I'll be honest, there's boards who would classify the way that this has gone since November as lack of adequate response. And that's a, you know, that's grounds for denial in, in most instances. Now, there can be extenuating circumstances, and the board can, you know, take mercy on that. That's, that's a decision each board has to, has to make on their own.
Also, from recollection, they submitted in 2003. Also from recollection, they, they submitted, uh, in 2003, and the next eleven appointments, they requested continuance. There was eleven continuances requested in the first year. And I'm sorry, I hope you don't feel attacked. I certainly do not mean to attack you.
Well, I, I guess I've, I, I've tried to explain some of the reasons, uh, behind the delays between November 3rd and today, and, um, as the, uh, as the developer, it is, uh, a difficult decision to, let's say, uh, change horses. Uh, and, um, as you may judge, um, that now seems most likely to be called for. And, uh, so there was, has been some delay on, on, uh, for that reason. But if I were to pick up with, uh, a firm such as Weston and Sampson, I think you'd see a very different kind of response, and a single person's illness wouldn't affect the schedule.
Okay. Any other topics or motions?
Just a question. Uh, some items in here, Adam, say, uh, waiver was requested. Do we grant any waivers?
No, no waivers. No waivers have, no waivers have been requested. This was a discussion between the engineers as to, uh, there, there were some items where perhaps the resolution of, uh, a minor item. I'll, I'll just give you one example, although we found a different way to correct it. There, there is a rule that catch basins must be spaced no further than 300 feet apart, and on one turn, uh, one radius turn, on the inside, they were 296, and on the outside, they were 302. So we thought, well, maybe, like, we could request a waiver for that, but in fact, in that particular instance, we just put in another catch basin. But there has been some engineering discussion, uh, of issues which are solvable without a waiver, but where a waiver just might make logical sense. But we, we've not, we've not concluded on, on any of those.
I was just looking at particularly the sidewalks and the street trees. It looked like you were asking to, from this document, not provide them as required.
Well, it, it, it could be that when we're completely done with this, we will have a list of items where we would, would come to the board and say, like, we're prepared to do all of this, but does it really make sense? I mean, do we, do we really need, if it's a sidewalk, do we really need a sidewalk that may go from nowhere to nowhere? I mean, we'll build it, but, uh, does that, is that logical? In the end, of 157 items, we may have five like that or six. It's a big project, but those we would not, uh, those would be presented and presented to the engineer, and I think we would have, we, we would seek agreement between our engineering firm and your, and your engineering firm before we came to the board.
Okay.
Any other, uh, public or board discussion on this?
Well, one of the other comments that wasn't addressed was the lack of a structural engineering stamp or even approval of the wetland crossings. A bridge obviously takes a structural engineer. Uh, that's a hardly a minor thing.
It's not uncommon for, um, especially on projects like this, for the, the board to approve the plan with the condition that structural drawings be provided.
I understand.
So yeah, I agree. It's, it's not a minor issue, but oftentimes, uh, they won't give you stamped plans until you've paid them for the bridge.
Two feet.
You can't take them somewhere else and.
I don't need to go on. There's, there's just a plethora of problems with this.
Well, I, I agree with you.
Okay. Uh, any other public comment? Hearing none. Any other board comment? Uh, motion to either continue, close, or do something with the hearing?
Well, we kinda have to be careful on what we do with that, don't we? I mean.
I, I would suggest that you're either going to continue it.
Either continue or.
To freeze the time clock, or you're going to close it and vote. If you do nothing, then, I mean, the applicant has requested a continuance.
Until May?
Until May. So by granting that continuance, you put the time clock back into stasis and you eliminated the potential constructive approval issues.
We're well into forty, forty continuances. So we've only got one meeting in May.
That will be your last meeting too, right?
I, I think at, at this point.
We could do the continuation and then, and the, and the May meeting, make the determination based upon, I mean, if through, um, the due diligence of your new engineering firm, they come through with absolutely everything that we've been asking for.
Well, I was gonna say, I think that you, at this point, if the project is going to go forward, you have to assume you're looking at a, a three-vote group. Um, I think, you know, because, you know, in nine days, if someone were able to address all of those issues perfectly and not have any of those corrections to those issues bring up an additional comment based on the way that they address them, you, I guess theoretically could vote at the first meeting in May. Um, in the time that I've been doing this, a, a letter like this generally doesn't get corrected in, in nine days, even, even at a, you know, a top-class, multi-office, you know, national firm.
We're three months.
And after seven years to have 156 comments, still, I mean, the, the review procedure, I, I think that this has lacked, you're new, a technical qualified director. That's fantastic. I think we should, we should rehear this under your guide, guidance. It's my feeling.
No, I think that, you know, also, the applicant has clearly stated his willingness to work with the board on a potential withdrawal. Uh, I think that you've gotten to this point, the one-month continuance, I don't think is going to harm the board, uh, to give the applicant the opportunity to do his due diligence. Um, you know, if you vote to deny tonight or you vote to deny on May 11th, you're not really changing, and you may actually offer the applicant the opportunity to withdraw with or without prejudice based on how, you know, how everything sort of shakes out. Uh, I think that the board's clearly making their position known, uh, and I think that, uh, you, you may show your benevolence by granting one final continuance.
Well, I haven't, I haven't voted in any approval for the others, but I will. I, I move that we continue the public hearing to, was it May 11?
Yes.
The other one's at 6:35. Can they both be at 6:35?
What other one?
6:40. 6:40? You think that's more than five minutes?
The zoning.
It's April 27th though.
That's April 26.
That's April 27th.
Oh, okay. Perfect. 6:30. Yes, I, I move that we continue the public hearing for this project until May 11th at 6:35.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, if we haven't echoed it enough already, say that we really hurting for information here, and we'd like to see a comprehensive package that we can understand.
And that will be, it, it, that will be in hand by May 11th, or, uh, you will see a vastly different approach to getting it answered readily by May 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thanks for coming, Rob.
Got to sit in that nice comfy seat for a couple hours. They're not much better.
Let's go back to you. Let's sat back down.
Uh, does everyone want to turn their folders in, or you guys wanna hold on to them and make sure you bring them back?
Turn the folder.
Ken's already passing this down.
Already passing it, already passing it in.
Oh, from both hearings.
Okay, both hearings.
I need this one too.
This one, this other one.
You didn't mix them up, did you Nathan?
Oh, yeah, I totally did.
Okay.
There's a reason I'm not writing. It's incompetent.
Yeah, this is the other one.
That's the big one.
Oh, here's the big ones. And a bunch of little ones. Thank you. Oh, wait, I think this might've come out of my, oh, jeez. Anyways.
I think we'll be okay.
All right, thanks. All right, so, uh, thanks. All right, next is minutes approval. Uh, first would be the minutes of March 23rd, and then the second would be the March 23rd warrant article hearing.
I'd make a motion.
Meeting, that's the hearings.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 3:23:15. Regular scheduled meeting.
Second. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And make a motion to approve the minutes from 3:23:15 warrant article hearing.
Second. Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that's great. Um, let's go to, we did committee reports. Um, I'm gonna just update my committee report a little bit, cause I was kinda signing something whilst doing it. Uh, one thing I mentioned is, um, so as, as you know, it was a pretty tough winter, so things are going well with the project overall, the school project. They are seven weeks behind schedule, which is quite a bit. I think the sense is that it's understandable, given the extreme weather that they had to deal with and the amount of snow blowing. Um, they may be able to make some of, of it up. It's not at a point which jeopardizes the successful opening. Uh, the school building committee and the, uh, project management firm is, you know, obviously, that's something they're watching pretty closely. Um, but I just wanna provide that update. Uh, the tree, uh, or sorry, the raising ceremony, which I mentioned earlier, I can tell you when that is gonna be, um, it's called the topping off ceremony. It's sort of a celebration of the completion of the steel of the building. They've had, uh, they've had a beam specially signed by the, um, members of the, the schools, the kids. And, oh, shoot, where, when is this? Uh, sorry. If you have kids in the school, you may have gotten emails about it. Okay, and that is going to be on April 28th, in the, tentatively scheduled for April 28th in the morning, intent is to have all students present for the ceremony. Community is welcome to. Final arrangements are underway. The event is weather dependent, and additional information will be forthcoming. So that's the update on the, from the school committee. Any questions about any, any of that? Okay. Um, okay, the next section is new business development status reports. Uh, town meeting on May 2nd, town elections on May 16th, definitive subdivision 50 Elmwood. There's a verbal update, and there were scans that you guys received.
Yeah, they're starting to be back at work. Uh, they're proposing to start paving tomorrow morning, uh, at 7:00 AM. Jesse Johnson of Ross and, uh, Jack Rodequins, uh, DPW director, have been notified, and I imagine they'll both, uh, swing by at some point and, and view the paving effort. Um, they have all the utilities installed. Um, they've done their fine grading, and I believe they have two or three lots in front of the Conservation Commission, uh, for orders and conditions at this point, um, with the intent that I imagine they'll be putting together a bond estimate to come to the board for lot releases in the near future.
Thanks for the update. Any questions?
Yeah, didn't that require a notice of intent to come before planning for the subdivision?
Notice of intent to come before planning?
Did they do an individual lot notice of intents?
Yeah. I think, I think that the road had a notice of intent and an order put forth, and then they're gonna do each lot individually.
Only the road, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Um, there's a new business report, High Field Village Number Five. We talked about that. Twelve, and the rest of the items, there's no report. Action file, looks like, uh, scenic road, Flat Hill and North Field.
It's on the warrant.
On the warrant, excellent.
I have a comment on that. Um, other towns have taken, and, um, like Boxborough, for instance, they have declared every road except for Route 111 a scenic road.
This one's scenic town.
Well, I mean, they're not any more scenic than we are. I just, I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just a question again on scenic roads. We, it was one of the recommendations, and we discussed the warrant article, the selectmen look at our kind of fees and penalties for people violating those things. Uh, what kind of processes there in regards to that? Is that just something administratively we can vote to change, or?
It would, it would have to depend. I, I have to do a little bit more research and find out what other communities do. It could be a general bylaw. It could be something that gets written into some other document.
Have a, any other questions? Um, I have a question about one of the new report items, the housing production plan. I'm sorry, I forget. What's our status on that? Has that gone into effect?
It is, it, with the state. We are just waiting the approval letter.
Okay, awesome. All right, so, uh, if there's no other questions about the action file, we move on to notice, notices and communications. Uh, the cover sheet was scanned to members. Do you have any further comment on any of those notices or communications?
No, I think that the, um, I think that I hit on them with the, uh, the Elmwood in front of Conservation. It's pretty low-key.
Yeah, it's April 15th.
All right, great. Um, meeting schedule? We have a meeting upcoming on April 27th, um, which we've rescheduled this public hearing we just talked about. Uh, there's one, May 2nd is town meeting. May 11th is, uh, our first meeting in May, and our only meeting in May. May 25th is Memorial Day, so that brings us to public comment. Hearing no public comment. We're gonna move to.
No one?
Board comment and member issues. That's board with an A, by the way.
Not B-O-R-E-D?
Yes, that's right, and thank you. Any, any board comment or member issues?
Nope.
Okay, I actually have, uh, a member issue, unless you got any, you got anything?
Nope.
All right. Um, all right, give me a sec here. I gotta work with my electronic devices here to access the extended memory. All right, it's just, it won't take long.
Sure you don't wanna bring that up at the second meeting in May?
What's that? What, what was that?
I said, are you sure you don't, are you sure you don't wanna bring that up at the second meeting in May?
Yeah, good one.
Matt, have you signed the ANR?
I have not. All right. Okay. Okay, so, um, here's what I wanna talk about. So it, uh, gets to, this is Adam's favorite topic, which is minor amendments to the VCD and APD. Um, can see how much he likes this already. Uh, so.
Makes me squirrely.
So I think, it, it, I guess, I'd like just some clarity. We, we, so I think, first of all, we got two really good documents.
They're very sound overall.
Mm-hmm. And we're not talking about fundamental changes here. I think the reality is that, you know, the warrant closed, and we've continued to get a lot of support, but also a little bit of input about some, some significant things, like, you know, the feedback from legal. Not earth-shattering, probably we could go forward without changing a word, but we've gotten a few things from legal and from board of selectmen. We've also got things that have been on our plate for a while, which is a little unfinished business, like a clause we took out of the design standards and moved to APD, then we changed APD. We moved it to APD. There was, I can, I can cite the, the which one it is here, but there was something about the New England construction where we gave examples of the materials, and when the APD was. and when the APD was covering new construction, before we changed it to not cover new construction, we said, well, we don't want to do double duty with that, so we took it out of the VCD, and then we took new construction out of the APD, and I think we wanted to put that line back in the VCD. So I guess what I'd like to talk about is, do we, we gotta understand what we're gonna do, are we gonna prepare a concise set of minor amendments at town meeting, in which case, I would suggest that we put them on the agenda for the next meeting, so that we can do our due diligence and have them neatly prepared, so that when we go, maybe we can even have a handout for people going into town meeting, so we can just have as clean and smooth an operation with that as possible, I mean, I agree with what Adam's saying, I think his reining us in and not making big changes like the one I suggested we entertained earlier, that was, you know, cooler heads are prevailing, and that's all good, but nonetheless, some minor things might make sense, but they only make sense if we're gonna really be ready and prepared and clean and crisp on.
No, I think you're right, and I think with legal, I think it's important to get those changes put in there, I think they're, they don't change the character, but I think that they tighten up some of the semantics, I think that, you know, as was discussed, removing the aggrieved party definition is also a suggestion from legal, and I think you're right, one or two of those small things that we've already talked about, and so I'll have a document prepared for you all before the, today's Monday, before the end of the week, that shows all that, so you can start to look at it, and we can put it on for the 27th, and, you know, have it put together as a handout for town meeting, along with whatever information, whatever other information I put together, so people have it in their hands.
True.
Excellent, that sounds great, and so we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
So, were there any, were there any last-minute revisions that we wanted to make to the APD as well?
I think just the stuff that legal suggested.
And the aggrieved?
That's the aggrieved party, that's actually the APD.
Oh, that is the APD, right, okay. Okay, so
So, I'll send around both documents.
Yeah, I would say, we can document it and suggest it, but they would have to make them
Yeah, and I think what I'll probably end up doing is sending around four documents, both documents with the legal amendments clean, and then what I'll do is I'll put in the other amendments that we've talked about into a second document to show the comprehensive, which would probably be what we're looking at as a recommendation for the minor alterations, just so that as you look at it, you can look at the one for the legal, and you can say, all right, this is the stuff that town council recommended, and then the other one will have all the additional stuff in it.
All right, we also, on the same topic, we also had talked about having some kind of a presentation?
Yeah, I'm in the process of putting that together.
So we'll review that at the next meeting as well?
Sure.
Or actually?
I was gonna roll it out at town meeting. No, yeah, I'll have
I don't want to see it.
I'll have a packet of slides for you guys to look at, I don't think I'm gonna run it on the projector, but I'll have a handout for you.
Yeah, as long as you can mail it out to us, whatever.
Yeah.
Again, let me know if you need help with graphic stuff.
Okay.
Or historic images.
Yeah, I think I might get some of the, I might want some of the pictures that you have.
Okay.
That sounds great, so, that sounds a great way to go, so, the one, so, the next thing I'm gonna talk about is sort of in that vein, but it's a little bit of a, it's not as big as extending the village district down to the church, but it's a little bit bigger than taking out aggrieved party. So, a resident contacted me recently with a question about the VCD, and I believe this resident may have also contacted Adam as well, the resident is a realtor who's involved with some local business people, and brought to my attention, they were asking about freestanding signs, and they were interested in having a freestanding sign, you know, outside one of the businesses here, on 2A, and actually, what they were saying made a lot of sense, and it led me to, without opening up Pandora's box completely, I was kind of curious, I rereviewed where the VCD stands on freestanding signs, and then I went back and rereviewed where residential district and limited business stand on freestanding signs, and what I found was that, in fact, so, I think, I think we've got a great bylaw, and I think we're gonna find little stuff like this, we're not gonna be able to fix it all before town meeting, but if we, I just want to make, so this particular thing, there is a provision for freestanding signs even in residence, residential districts and limited business districts, meaning, you can have freestanding, you can have freestanding, so if you have a home occupation or whatever, you can have, I think it's a nine-square-foot maximum freestanding sign, the square footage is conditioned based on, I think, distance from the edge of the property or whatever, the closer it gets to the street, the smaller, it has to get smaller, I think, I think it's, you subtract a square foot for every, I don't know, you'd have to read it, but it's, long story short, there is a provision for freestanding signs, it's allowed in residential, one per, one per street facing, so if you lived on the corner, so that person who lives on the corner, let's say, over on, you know, Lancaster there, and Whiting, I think, in theory, maybe could have two street signs, two freestanding signs in their house, because they could have one for Lancaster, one for Whiting, if I correctly, if I correctly read the residents, the sign bylaw as it affects residents' districts, so I guess, I emailed Adam about this, just so he could start thinking about it, because, you know, I trust him to get something consistent together more than me just kind of shooting from the hip, but I think there might be something there that's worth looking at in terms of tweaking our straight-up prohibition on freestanding signs to doing something that's kind of compatible with what's already allowed for residence A and limited business. So that's, I don't want to drone on and on about that, that's, you get the idea, so the only reason I'm bringing it up as a possible amendment is because it's a regression from less permissive districts, that I don't think we intended necessarily, but you guys can correct me if, you know, I'd be curious to hear what y'all have to think about that.
With the signs section of that bylaw, I think we took a lot of those cues from the state model bylaw, I feel like we talked a while on it, and we still stuck pretty closely to what the state model was, and I feel that's pretty generous compared to what's allowed now, I don't know, I think maybe we could revisit it, but I don't think on town meeting floor is
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we're very limited in the kind of changes we can put on town meeting floor, and if I recall correctly, they can't really change intent of sections, but they can provide clarification, that would be changing the intent.
Yeah, going from prohibit to allow.
Going from prohibit to allow is changing the intent, and that would not be allowed on town floor, as far as I know, or, I guess, the speaker, I mean, the moderator can choose whether or not to allow it.
Yeah, you know, I think
But typically, it's minor points of clarification that are introduced, not big changes, because it goes out, people read it, absorb it, understand it, ask questions about it or whatnot, and they expect it to be what was
Substantially similar.
Right, and not say, oh, and by the way, we can have McDonald's and drive-throughs too, you know, whatever, and all of a sudden, you started introducing all these things that, on the floor, that had people known about it earlier, they would have come to the town meeting, because
Sure.
They would be greatly concerned.
They would be against it or
Yeah, like, I don't want signs in the center of town, and it said there wouldn't be, and then all of a sudden, you guys changed it, so, I think stuff like that, we might want, if, you know, if we find that there's things that it has to evolve, I think the better thing to do would be to amend it later.
I also think that we want to think about what the intent of the village district was, and the reason that you felt that the prohibition on freestanding signs was a reasonable addition, you know, we're talking about reduced setbacks, reduced lot size, you know, we're talking about zero lot line almost in some places.
Zero lot size.
When you, yeah, when, zero lot size, and when you start introducing freestanding signs, what's the impact on what you're trying to create with the village district? And I understand the concern that this resident has, and the issue that they're having with the specific property, and it's based on the way that that property is constructed, it's an issue that's, quite honestly, probably existed for decades, and it seems that only now have they looked to address it at the point when it's become a prohibited issue. And maybe that's just poor timing, maybe, you know, the property owners just becoming proactive, but maybe there's an alternative that might work, that's contained within the village district, that, you know, may work equally as well, or at least nearly as well, as a freestanding sign, and I think that, again, you know, you're talking about a density of use, and if you start to look at freestanding signs, and you're putting more commercial businesses in an area, and everybody wants to have a freestanding sign, at what point do you create a sign pollution, and, you know, the historical commission was here, and their concern is the impact on the people who reside here, and what impact does adding freestanding signs have to that, as opposed to on-building signage? So, you know, again, we, Mr. Ebersol talks a lot about unintended consequences, and you're looking at creating something that is felt by this board and a lot of the people that this board speaks to, is going to enhance the downtown, or the center of town, I guess it's not really a downtown, the center of town, and make it potentially someplace that people want to be, and by introducing mass freestanding signage, because once, one person has, everybody's gonna want one so that everybody can see it, and what's that impact, you know, globally on the town and the village center? So I'm not saying it's necessarily
Then you also get the lighting of the signs and all that sort of stuff, too.
No, so you make a good point, I think, yeah, the unintended consequences, I would say, can cut both ways, right, so like, it's like, you know, I'll give you a couple examples, so, I agree with what you're saying, it may, the prohibition may be the right thing, what's allowed in residence A is like nine square feet, that's pretty small, and it's smaller, it's actually, there's a little formula, so it gets smaller if you get closer to the lot line, you see a lot of businesses, like the Harley House has always had that little sign, right, it's for things like that, there's gonna be, in the, because of the existing buildings in the village district, there's gonna be properties which are now gonna be able to have businesses in them, which is great, which may initially not make sense to change their setbacks, you know?
Oh, sure, yeah.
And that's where something like that, even if we're by special permit, might make a significant difference, if you look at the condition, like of the property she's looking at, having a freestanding, a small freestanding sign, I think it's a max eight or nine feet high, three square, nine square feet, versus the alternative, which we allow for, which would be attaching it 10 feet up on the building, I'm not sure 10 feet up on the building looks better, per se, the other thing is if, and I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to make the other case
No, no, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to table your discussion, but should we make a determination as to whether or not we could even bring this to, I mean, to town meeting, because like I said, I think it does change the intent, and I don't think that we want to introduce anything that changes the intent, I don't think we're arguing whether or not
Okay.
Your idea is a good idea or not.
I'm not even sure, I have bought into it yet.
Right, right, but I don't, whether we buy into it or not, I don't think we want to introduce it at town meeting.
I would agree with that.
I agree with Ken.
So, maybe we, you know, table the discussion or whatever, but I think it's a good idea, and it's certainly something that we should consider as we move forward, and hopefully the VCD will go through and not get voted down because it didn't allow the signs, but like I said, we can always amend and add and compensate for, you know, because no bylaw is perfect, right? So we're gonna revisit a lot of other ones, too, next year.
And, you know, and what I'll say is
Or next
In the next year.
Next session, I guess.
And I think what we want to be careful of is, you know, once you introduce something that has a dimension, it opens up the special permit dimensional variation, so, even a three-by-three sign can become potentially a 12-by-12 sign pretty quickly, if somebody does, you know, the right song and dance, I think that to put an idea out there, if we're gonna look at it, maybe we look at monument signs as opposed to pylon, they tend to have a more integrated look, they tend to be a little less obtrusive, and usually they are in a, in a material and a design that's going to fit the idea of a village district a little bit better.
Yeah, and just
I mean, that's just something to think on.
Yes, I agree, I think that's, those are the kind of things to think about, because, I mean, if you, just to wrap up, I mean, the thing, just to drive this home so that it gets pulled up on the agenda for future meetings, is, you know, there's the irregular, there's lots that are already set back, then there's, we've talked about supporting like outdoor spaces, like patios, which might create different desires for signage, there's also the campuses, like you have a big campus, a monument sign might be useful, just recalling attention to the fact, oh, I built this great campus, it's got lots to do in it, here's something that brands it on the outside, but the other things about character are totally true as well, I guess, and then, the other unintended consequences are, in the absence of being able to do a monument sign, you're gonna have more sandwich boards, more temporary signs that are out every day, so, that's, you might have some of that, so that's, anyways, I agree, I don't disagree about not doing it town meeting, I don't think it's a decision that needs to be rushed or whatever, but, but I think you might get some feedback from residents in relation to that, and, I think, you know, we're talking a minor thing, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to propose, you know, change everything whatever, so, yeah, that's it. So that was all I had for public comments, mainly about those amendments, I think the proposed way of getting those, you talk about doing those changes is great, so any other member issues?
Nope.
All right, motion to adjourn, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, 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 aye.